I'd like to call this joint meeting of the Board of Health and the Board of County Commissioners to order. It's Tuesday, August 4th, 2015. And our first item of business is adjustments to the agenda. And one of the things I want to note is we have public comments on the agenda twice today, one for the joint meeting and one for the regular board meeting. I will take all public comment at this first meeting, seeing it's a joint meeting. And that way you don't have to wait through the tobacco ordinance public hearing if you have other general public comment you want to give to the board. And that will save you some time if you just wanted to give us some general public comment and get out of here. So are there any other adjustments to the agenda for the joint meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. And I've got two people signed up for public comment this morning. And the first person is Webb Sussman. And if you'll just come to the microphone, state your name and where you're from for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name is Webb Sussman. I'm from the city of Eugene. And I had several items I wanted to talk to you about this morning, none of which have anything to do with the tobacco ordinance. The first was that I didn't have an opportunity to tell you at the time. I had some personal business I had to take care of. But I was very sorry that the road ordinance didn't pass. I thought it was a good attempt. As I told you in testimony back in March, I thought it was a wrong-headed attempt. I thought that you were attempting to solve a problem that wasn't yours to fix. But I did very much appreciate the attempt and the desire to try and do something in the face of what the county is looking at in way of revenue and in the way of trying to keep our transportation system going. Along those lines, I would strongly encourage the county to collaborate with the local cities and towns, as well as other counties in the state, to put the problem where it more appropriately lies, with the state legislature and with the federal government, specifically the Congress. Congress has just passed a patch to kick the can down the road on transportation funding another six months to a year. The state did nothing in this last session. I would encourage you to -- I recognize that we're sort of out of season on this matter, but I would encourage you guys to activate your lobbyist and engage with the other cities and towns, engage with the counties who are facing similar problems, and start laying your groundwork now to get some effective action at the state level and at the federal level in the coming session. On a separate note, I was fortunate enough to be able to go through the local tour of homes recently. I was very impressed with what the local builders are doing. I thought it was very interesting, but I was also very disappointed in that I didn't see -- we're currently suffering a drought. We have issues coming up with reliability of our electrical grid, and I saw very little attempt by the developers to address either of those things. And I would like to encourage the county to step up their efforts to encourage the developers to think more about conserving water when they're building. A lot of these developments have very water-intensive landscaping, very water-intensive layouts in the actual structure themselves. And I think it would behoove the county, given that we're not entirely sure that we're going to be out of this drought in one year, two years, five years, that we start to address the issue now while we're still sort of ahead of the game, rather than try to play catch-up two or three years down the road when we have a real crisis. Finally, the U of O is having an earthquake seminar this coming Thursday night. I put a little bit of information up on my website. The U of O has a lot of information up on theirs. This started with the discussion in The New Yorker with that article. The U of O decided to piggyback on that. I'm thinking that it would be a discussion worth attending, and I would encourage the Commissioners and Mr. Murakowski to attend and to take notes. And on that note, I thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Sandy Man.
I'm back. The first comment I have is I just like the fact that you took comments later on. When you have them early on, it's kind of harder for me to get organized, but on the positive note, it gets me here on time. Second comment I had was with regard to the matter of the internal audit, temporary internal audit committee appointment. I don't know if you ever have external audits, but I used to work for the state of Texas for 10 years, workers comp for seven years. And we always had an external audit, which gave a much more objective viewpoint. An internal audit was kind of, a lot of times, not very objective. Third comment I had had to do with the salary increase for Steve Dingle. I know there's a contract, but I did some research. I was a research assistant. I have a master's degree in international relations, relations for teaching credentials, one specialization, and a bachelor's degree in social work. I taught science. I know something about that, too. And I know there's a contract for him, but Commissioner Bozovic, in 2010, October 13th -- I need new glasses. You're quoted as saying, "With federal payments to counties drying up and renewal hardly a sure thing," you said county spending must be slashed. So my idea would be, like I said, I know there's a contract, but maybe county salaries need to be taken a look at and no increases or maybe reduction in salaries instead of cutting at the bottom all the time, like not even having copies of agendas for people to get. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to address the board this morning? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Commissioner's response to public comments and/or other remonstrance. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to say to Mr. Sussman, thank you for mentioning the transportation issue. I think that that -- I think your assessment was really how we were kind of all feeling at one point or another, that ultimately it should have been in the legislature's hands as well as the Congress's hands. Just recently, I met with Senator Byer, and so we do not expect a transportation package to be coming up in the short session. It's likely not to happen until the next regular session, where it'll happen beyond that. So that's not good news. I'm also a member of the National Association of County Steering Committee on Transportation as well. And a quick update, your assessment, I understand, about kicking the can. But I do, I will tell you this. It looks like to me from that they are giving themselves time to actually write what I would think a comprehensive six-year reauthorization. And I did speak to not only our staff folks, but we're fortunate to have Congressman Defazio, the ranking member in transportation, but also Senator Wyden, who's the ranking member of the Senate Finance Committee. So they'll both be actively involved in writing the transportation package. And I think what they wanted to do is give themselves time. And what we were hearing is that the moves were extremely positive and the fact that both sides are talking to each other, both sides feel that this is very much needed. What this will do for the state of Oregon and for Lane County is limited. It really will address the federal highways issue much more than what it would do from the local standpoint. So really, from the local standpoint, and you're exactly right, that is our message. In fact, we'll be huddling next week, AOC Summer Conference, and we are, our transportation committee will be meeting. And that is going to be one of our messages, is really for all of the Commissioners, not only on the committee, but I think Commissioners around the state, to really start, really hit their legislative leaders and talk about, you know, this is unacceptable. And again, I'll reiterate, the state of Washington was able to pass a $15 billion transportation package, but Oregon couldn't pass its $373 million transportation package. And very disappointing. And it's disappointing the fact that in Washington, you have a Democratic-controlled House, Republican-controlled Senate, and a Democrat governor. They all came together to make this happen for the benefit of Washingtonians. And yet, we could not move forward on what I would consider to be a package that would benefit all Oregonians. So I think your message is well received, and I really appreciate that. What I will tell you is we are working diligently, the best we possibly can, with our legislative leaders to see that we can move forward on something that will, I think, benefit all Oregonians. So appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic. You know, this is not a health-related issue, but in response to Mr. Sussman, thank you for bringing up the U of O's symposium or hearings or discussion on Thursday night regarding earthquake preparedness. And I'd like to remind everybody that when Commissioner Bozovic accepted the chair of the board, one of the very first things that he talked about was the possible eventuality of a major earthquake in our area, and talked about preparedness. And that is something that, based upon the chair's keen eye on it, we have been, and Mr. Murakowski's follow-through on that, we've been preparing our emergency plan. And it's something that really is at the forefront of the Board of County Commissioners and the administrator. Thank you for adding your voice to the call on that. And thanks for being here this morning, Mr. Sussman.
Commissioner, so, and then Commissioner.
I just wanted to say that I think the attacks on Planned Parenthood and the Congress are just uncalled for, unbelievable. In this day and age, to see this kind of rhetoric about attacks on family planning and birth control is just appalling. Second thing I want to say is thanks to Mr. Sussman for coming today. And I think that the attention on earthquake planning is both a personal business and governmental responsibility. It's not just a personal responsibility. It's not just a business responsibility, and it's not just a government responsibility. But it seems to me that Lane County's building codes, Lane County's ordinances, Lane County's policies regarding its own government policies is where the focus here at the Lane County Board of Commissioners belongs. And I strongly agree with you that increased knowledge and information is the first step toward action, but I think action is also important. And I think that governments along the Pacific Rim, particularly the governments that are more familiar to us in terms of Canada and Alaska, Washington, Oregon, California, that those governments are all trying to do something in their own powers. And I think we could learn a lot from the coastal counties, especially in Washington and British Columbia, that are, in my view, ahead of us in terms of planning and in terms of us in terms of ordinances. So thanks so much for coming in and reminding us of that important responsibility.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address a couple items that were mentioned. Mr. Sussman, the first one is I've been working approximately eight years with our land management department in the building, trying to encourage us to look at adopting some green building codes, which would do exactly, I think, what you're talking about, trying to look at rainwater storage, trying to water reuse, solar incentives. But I've been met with lots of different challenges. First is, we had the staff person that was working on it, the position got cut, then we went through downturn, and now we're struggling to staff up to meet the demand and permit approval process right now. So I've kind of been battling that. And one thing that we determined might be beneficial is the state is actually working on creating some green building codes right now that counties and cities can adopt. So we're monitoring that in hopes that maybe that would be the easiest approach for us, is to kind of piggyback on the state. So I just want to let you know that I'm working on it, and hopefully it'll get done. The second is, Mr. Man, I wanted to share that we do have an external auditor that does audit our financial bookwork. We have an audit committee that reviews that. The difference between the internal auditor and the external auditor is the internal really focuses on our policies and our practices to make sure that we're following, first of all, our regulations that we have on the books, but also looking for ways to improve the way we do our service provisions. So hopefully, that clears up a little bit of the confusion that may have existed, but we do have an external auditor. And for the life of me, can't remember their name right off the top of my head, but Moss Adams does it. So we do have an external auditor. Which we've been rated as a low-risk audit for the past five years, because we have, our books are in such good shape. Yeah, the internal auditor is an interesting position, because that person reports solely to the board, not to the administrator. So they're actually independent from the administration. Then they're somewhat of a third party, even though they are hired and paid for by the board. They're independent of the actual administration. So it's actually, we have not only this third-party external audit, but we have this person that works directly for the board, that does performance auditing of the organization. So it's really a well-managed system of controls that we've put in place that adds to the transparency of Lane County. I also want to note one other thing from Mr. Man. Public comment is usually the second item on our agenda after adjustments to agenda at all regular board meetings. So it almost always comes up right after nine o'clock. It's a rare exception when it does not come up right after nine o'clock, something like where we have a public hearing for a supplemental budget adjustment. That will come sometimes before public comment. Sometimes, a Board of Health or a housing authority meeting will come before regular public comment. But in a normal board meeting, it is almost always the second item, which tends to be about five after nine, just so you're aware. So if you're planning on public comment, you need to kind of walk in the door ready to make that. And I will note that I believe, you know, earthquakes are a health issue for us and our emergency preparedness. Our ability to recover from any sort of disaster, natural or man-made, will have a great effect on the health of the citizens of Lane County, ultimately, for the next several months after that event, or even years. So how well we prepare for that is really important. And I have to give credit where credit's due. It was actually Governor Kitzhopper that started the whole committee and study on the subduction zone earthquake that generated the Resiliency Plan report that actually generated The New Yorker article. That resiliency report was finalized and published back in 2013. So it took The New Yorker almost two years to pick up the story and write about it. But that plan's been out there that identifies the fact that we may be without power here in the valley after a subduction zone earthquake for one to three months. We may be without water and sewer for three to six months. And how well people are planned for that, let alone what will actually happen on the actual coast in a 9.0 subduction, plus the tsunami. You know, how we prepare for that, that's kind of the worst-case scenario, and I'm sure we'll probably hear more about that Thursday night at U of O. But preparing for that will help us prepare for everything in between, whether it's the flooding events from back in 1996 we had to deal with in Lane County, or wildfire fence they're dealing with in Douglas County right now. You know, those people that are having to be evacuated, did they have go bags? Did they think about what they were going to take with them if they had to leave their house ahead of time? Or were they scrambling to figure out, do I grab the pictures and family records, or do I take my computer hard drive? Do I have pet food? You know, all those things need to be thought of upfront. And I'm hoping that The New Yorker kind of gets us all around to, we've got to think about this a little bit before it actually happens, and individually prepare, as well as a county prepare. And I think we're starting to do the work as a county. We did a lot of work last week with pre-authorizations for the county administrator and getting those drafted up. We're working on a refinement of our emergency operations plan, which gets done every year anyway. So it's, and we were, the administrator and I were down in Florence this week, and we're talking with them about their emergency operation plan they're drafting right now. So, and coordinating with that with cities, as well as the counties and the state, and getting that all to be ready to work together if we do have that major disaster, and we'll be ready to respond. So, and I think it also helps us prepare for other large events in this area, like the World Games coming up, and having our coordination all set up. So an important item for the county. So with that, if there's no further remonstrance, we'll move on to item 4A, which is public hearing and third reading of ordinance number 1505 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 9 to address tobacco sale regulation issues.
Mr. Chairman. Here's one more public comment regarding this issue.
Oh, that, when we open the public hearing, I'll be calling for Ms. Miller. Yeah. Yeah. There's general public comment, and then there's a public hearing. So we haven't opened the public hearing yet, so sorry if we're confusing a little bit. But so, let me finish, let me go back and reread. So it's a public hearing and third reading of ordinance 1505 in the matter of amending Lane Code, Chapter 9, to address tobacco sale regulation issues relating to discounting prices, proximity of sales to locations serving children, and fees and penalties. And we have Ms. Hayes and Ms. Gaffney. And if you want to start, and then I have a question for counsel before we get into the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Good morning. Today, after we get the question answered in the public testimony, we have a short presentation and then look forward to the discussion and the decision as we move forward on this. So I will actually turn it back to you.
So, yeah, before we get too far into this, I wanted to make sure, the last meeting, we went through each of the options and voted on an option, but we changed language in one of those options slightly, to read public schools, 1,000 feet from public schools. My question is, is do we need a fourth, a public hearing and fourth reading of this? Or was, do you believe that that discussion was enough to be considered the full reading of the ordinance 13 days ahead of action? Can we take, the question is, can we take action today or not?
Chair Bozovic, the if, and I can't remember exactly what the language was, but if, if the board has in front of it a series of choices, which I recall was actually the way it was presented last time, was a menu-type approach, then that material was out there and the public had an opportunity to comment on it. So if the board were to, as part of that last reading, were to simply select different options, then there would be no, there would be no need to set a fourth reading. However, if the language was changed, and it was changed after the public had an opportunity to comment on it, then what you would need to do was, would be to set that fourth reading with that language for the, so the public would have an opportunity to comment on it. I just don't know what the, I can't recall the specifics of what the change in the language was.
Yeah, it was fairly minor, but it was after the public hearing.
Then I would recommend that it be set for 4-3.
And Chair Bozovic, I think there are two places, and the one on the 1,000 feet, we, you had gone from the draft of public and private to only public schools, is my recollection.
Right.
So that, I think, was in there. My wondering is about on the fines and fees, where the language, to mirror at OLCC, we had in the draft that was published, that it was a three-year look back, and then you asked us to go to a two-year look back. So that may be the place where.
So there's a second place. I forgot about that one also. So then, that's all the more reason to go to a fourth reading before we actually take action, so we get the proper sequence here where we have the complete thing out there in public. This will be an opportunity for folks to comment on that. And again, now, is that fourth reading, do we need to hold a public hearing with that fourth reading, or just have the fourth reading at that point? Because if we hold the public hearing today on the current language.
You'd have, you wouldn't have to do that on that one if you gave the opportunity today.
Okay. Does everybody understand the process, or any questions on that process?
The essential point, Chair, is that the public have an opportunity to comment on the language and the choices that you have before you make those choices.
Right. And then we allow the 13 days before we take action. So now that I've cleared that up like mud.
Karen has a short presentation.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners. And I will, for the benefit of viewers who may not have been part of this conversation that we've been having over the last several months, briefly go through some background and then highlight what the proposed amendments are that are in your packet for today. Two years ago, the county worked with Peace Health and Trillium and United Way to complete our first community health improvement plan. We call that the CHIP, which is our roadmap as a community to improving health in Lane County. And as part of that process, reducing tobacco use was identified as a priority, which makes sense, since it's the leading cause of preventable death in our community. As a result of that, the board discussed, over several sessions, your desire to address these issues first among youth in our community, knowing that prevention and early intervention through policies really provides a cost-effective way to address those problems, knowing how very difficult it is to quit smoking once people start. We wanted to do what we could to prevent that. And we know that most people who end up addicted to tobacco start when they're young people. After a number of discussions, the tobacco retail licensing was identified as a priority for county work, including wrapping that into your strategic plan. And based on data from other communities, you knew this was a way to effectively address sales of tobacco products to minors. After a public hearing, the board adopted a tobacco retail licensing program, along with e-cigarette regulations in December of last year, and that applies to unincorporated Lane County. The board asked staff to work with cities within the county to encourage them to adopt the same language, to really get to a county-wide policy that would impact tobacco availability. Staff reached out to each mayor and city administrator in writing, and then followed up offering to provide more information in a presentation. Dr. Lutke, our senior health officer, and I met with a number of cities throughout the spring to talk about this policy. In May, the board received a staff report that included some feedback from retailers and our discussions with cities. And the board then asked staff to prepare options for amending the language in your tobacco retail licensing program. Given the potential for those amendments to the ordinance, staff at that time put meeting with cities on hold until the board language was finalized. And the timing of that really also worked with the last part of the legislative session. As you know, the legislature was talking about different policy options as well. So we've had a preliminary meeting with staff from Eugene since that time. As you may recall from our early discussions, they have a tobacco retail licensing regulation. It is not nearly as robust as the language that the county has adopted. So we're in the process right now of analyzing for them the differences between those two policies. And of course, staff are ready to resume the discussions with the cities as soon as you complete your work and we have your final language to take back to them. So before you today, there were four specific areas you asked for amendments, and I'll just quickly review those, and you have that language in your packet. The first is related to coupons and price discounts. Your current code prohibits the use of coupons and discounts. And this was originally included because of the research about how price-sensitive youth are, as well as the frequency with which youth use discounts. Some of the retailers were concerned because they felt that since the policy wasn't consistent countywide, that it really set up an opportunity for people to take their business right across the line into a city, and really didn't impact the availability of tobacco in the same way as if it was a county-wide policy. So the draft language to address that concern deletes sections of Lane Code 9.753 that currently speak to coupons and discounts. The second area you asked us to look at was the proximity of retailers to schools and youth-serving organizations, and then attached to that, the grandfathering language. Your current code prohibits retailers from locating within 1,000 feet of a youth-serving establishment. establishment, which is defined very broadly to include schools, libraries, arcades, and recreational facilities. This was originally included in the ordinance because of the research about the impact of tobacco advertising on youth, most of which now is really centered at retail locations. And the data that shows that youth who live in or go to school in neighborhoods with high density of tobacco retailers have higher smoking rates. Some retailers were concerned because they felt that even though their current store would be grandfathered into that location, if they sold their store, that the new owners would not be able to sell tobacco, and thus their business would be of less value. We also heard some concern that the density of youth-serving establishments is so high inside of a city that it would not reasonably provide any locations for tobacco retailers. The draft language in the amendments before you to address this concern limits the restriction to a thousand feet of schools only and defines that as public schools, and then allows all current locations to be grandfathered in. So if the ownership of a store would change, that grandfathering would still apply. The third area you asked us to look at was the phrase of community education was included in the original ordinance that the licensing fee that retailers paid would cover both the implementation and administration and enforcement of this code, as well as be available for community education. Some concerns were expressed that this could make the code vulnerable to being considered a tax, and as you know, local governments are preempted from taxing tobacco. In L.A. County, the license fee that we charge, as an aside, is $200, and we set that fee through finance and audit based on the costs truly just to administer the program. So it does not raise a lot of money that would be available for any other purpose. I know county council's done a review of this issue for you and recommends that the application fee revenue not be permitted to be used for county, for community education. And so the draft language in front of you today deletes the two words "and" and "community" in section 9.766. And then the final area you asked us to address was fines and penalties. The current code was based on ordinances from other communities that have been successful at decreasing tobacco availability, that use a five-year look back period for determining the progression of fines, suspensions, and revocations. So if someone violates the terms of the code, basically the sanctions would stack up during a five-year period before they would drop off. This was originally included to create a sufficient deterrent for retailers, and we sometimes refer to that as putting teeth into the ordinance. Some retailers expressed concerns that the schedule was too stiff and left them vulnerable to action by disgruntled employees who might try to have a retailer lose their license and intentionally sell to youth. Some also suggested that the penalties should be more closely modeled on current OLCC rules for illegal sales of alcohol. So the amendments before you today changed the language in your ordinance, in your code, to mirror the OLCC rules, which basically reduces the look back period to two years and changes the fines to be the same as the OLCC rules. And then it also includes a reference to current state law that prohibits, or that provides penalties for clerks who sell to underage youth. So that is my overview of the amendments before you at this time, and I'm happy to answer questions now or after the public hearing, as you wish.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Sorenson.
I wanted to go back to this slide that talked about the schools. So, on the first point, where it says that the current code prohibits new tobacco retailers within 1,000 feet of establishments serving children, it allows retailers to be licensed through a grandfather clause, prohibits licenses from being transferred to new owners upon sale of store. Now, when that was enacted, there was the same opposition that's currently being raised, that this would prohibit the store owner or would inhibit the store owner from selling their store. Is the license issued to the store, or is the license issued to a person?
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, the way, the license is issued to the store and the store owner. So I think, and county council can certainly chime in in terms of interpreting this, the way it was structured initially was that the owner, that the license was non-transferable from one owner to another owner. And that's still the case, except for we're grandfathering in these locations. So those locations, we would be able to license a new owner at that same.
I mean, if Dairy Mart or 7-Eleven owned a store outside of a city under the current ordinance, their corporation is incorporated for, in perpetuity, forever. And I'm, I'm trying to understand how the sale to a, specifically to a corporation, would be affected by this provision. Most of these stores are owned by either family-owned corporations or really big corporations. And in any event, they're owned by corporations. What is the issue of the prohibition of the transfer when it's owned by a corporation?
Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, I think I understand the question. I, I don't think that there would be a difference if, if under the current version, owner A can sell it to subsequent buyer B, right? And buyer B can get the, because of the location, it's grandfathered in. I don't think it would make a difference if it was corporation A selling to corporation buyer B. They would be grandfathered in, in other words, they would have the location.
What I'm saying is, what does, if, if that's the case with the current code, I'm not understanding why we would need to change it if the concern was, hey, you know, we're, we're a 7-Eleven corporation, and gee, if you don't prohibit us, if you, if we don't get this grandfather provision in the new ordinance, we will somehow be prohibited from staying there as 7-Eleven or its successor corporation and receiving this license. Unless they sold it to, you know, Jeb Bush, Mr. Jeb Bush, who is a person, I, I don't quite understand what, what the change is actually getting for these folks.
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, let me try it again, and perhaps between Steve and I, we can help get to an answer that makes sense. So the current code specifically says that a license cannot be transferred, so when, from one proprietor to another, and it doesn't specify whether those are corporations or individuals who own it, it may not be transferred. And so these amend, the amendments that are proposed add a section to the code that specifically allows for a retailer that's been in operation at a location that's been grandfathered in, that would other, who would otherwise be ineligible to receive or renew a tobacco retail license because of the location, that they are exempt from that prohibition. So, I don't know if that answers your question in terms of what these changes provide.
Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, now I understand your question. So yes, under the previous, or under the existing version of the code, the, the, the people who are grandfathered in can, as long as, and I don't think, I agree with Ms. Gaffney, there was no intention, it appears to distinguish between individuals and corporations, as long as they own the premises, they could continue to renew and sell tobacco products there. However, under the existing code, if they sold that to another person or another corporation, that subsequent purchaser would not be able to. Under the proposed amendment, it would allow the current owner, whether it be an individual or a business, to transfer the ability to get that license. I believe this was, this was proposed because current store, store owners were concerned about the diminution in value because of the inability by the subsequent buyer to sell tobacco products.
Now, the Oregon Constitution and the federal constitution prohibits government from taking something of value without paying just compensation. Where does that intersect with the grandfather concept?
Well, Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, that was another issue that was raised when this was brought up. Under current Oregon law, you really, it has to almost, there's in fact a very recent decision involving the Viewcrest overpass, where the Oregon Supreme Court addressed the issue of essentially inverse condemnation, which is sort of what this is, a taking. And it really has to almost be reduced to a zero value by the, by the change in regulations. That doesn't mean that someone couldn't mount that argument. In other words, they, I don't know what the percentage is. So for example, I think it's an unknown. If it turns out that 99 and nine-tenths percent of the value or the income of the store came from tobacco products and they were prohibited from doing it, you clearly have a taking.
It seems like, it seems like the testimony was that a substantial amount of the revenue from these stores is tobacco and alcohol, tobacco and alcohol, okay? You go into your average 7-Eleven, and you see a lot of tobacco and a lot of alcohol being sold. And it seems like it would be hard for the retailer to make the case that, that if they get roughly, you know, 10% of the revenue from everything else and 40% from, from alcohol and 50% from tobacco, it'd be hard to make the case that our tobacco licensing deprived them of, of virtually all their value when they have this other value that is an ongoing aspect of their business.
And Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, it's a fact-specific thing. I mean, you, you said that in a very general term, I don't know what that, you know, again, I think it just depends on.
Well, if it was tobacco-only store, you know, then, then yes, the amendment that the board is contemplating would allow that tobacco-only store to continue because, otherwise it would be a taking if you took all of the tobacco away, right?
Right.
Yeah. And so it allows the tobacco-only store to continue indefinitely if we make this change.
Correct. And in other words, if the, if the, if the subsequent purchaser wants to keep the business doing that, they can. And I want to emphasize, there's always a distinction between bringing a claim and being successful on a claim.
Sure.
Right? So that's, and then that Viewcrest case is a good example. I mean, that, the, ultimately, ultimately, the state or ODOT prevailed in the, against the claim that it was an indirect taking, but that was after a jury returned a verdict and after it'd been to the Court of Appeals and after, you know, it took five years and who knows how many attorney fees to ultimately come up with that result.
Now, regarding the second dot there, or bullet, the current language is something like establishment serving children?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to?
And then the, the amendment would be to limit restriction of the sales within 1,000 feet of public schools. And my question about the public part of the public schools was, we know that there are these opportunity centers, there are other school, public schools that do not have big signs in front of them and lawns and school buses that are pulling up and taking children home and whatnot. And what I would think of as a parent to be a public school, there are all these alternative public schools, and I'm wondering if those are included in the definition of public school? Or is this more narrowly to Roosevelt Middle School with a big flag out in front and a school board member who uses a wheelchair greeting the people as they enter the school and thanking them for their coming to school today and learning? And is it more than just that kind of public school?
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, the language that is in the amendments in front of you today specifically says a public kindergarten, elementary, middle, junior high, or high school.
Okay.
Is how that's listed.
What about opportunity center? What about a sheltered workshop? No?
As we talked about it last time when we were before you, the opinion of county council was that that would not be, those would not be included in the definition of a public kindergarten, elementary, et cetera.
Okay. So it's really more the, in your view, the more specific definition of a school property?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. I, I will have other questions, but I think I've taken enough of time on the first round.
Are there other questions for staff before we go to the public hearing? There are no other questions, Commissioner Sorenson, if you wanted to continue?
Sure. Now, going back to the first slide, you had a slide kind of giving us the timeline here where we have the Community Health Improvement Plan approved in the summer of 2013. Right there at the beginning, we talked about things beyond licensing, including the use of tobacco in county facilities, specifically buildings and parks. What is the possibility of amending this ordinance and, because of its amendment, having a hearing that we're gonna, we're gonna have, to broaden the ordinance to include, say, something like restricted or, or no smoking at county parks and marinas?
No one else is leaning towards their microphone, so I'll answer that one. Certainly, for, as a department, we're happy to prepare whatever amendments the board would like us to bring back to you and to provide the public health analysis on any of those options. At this point, what we prepared and brought to you in December was based on your discussion about where you wanted to start, which was specifically around tobacco retail licensing. And then because you heard from two of your advisory committees, the Health Advisory Committee and the Mental Health Advisory Committee, that they were also concerned about e-cigarettes, we wrapped those two things together. So that's, that's how we brought this particular policy to you, but we're, we're happy to prepare whatever is your pleasure in support of the Community Health Improvement Plan.
Okay. And could you refresh our recollections about the Community Health Improvement Plan as it applies to public land such as parks? Does it say, we'll take that up later, or does it say, we're gonna do it now, or does it say nothing about?
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, the Community Health Improvement Plan, and again, that's the broad document that was adopted by Peace Health, L.A. County, United Way, and Trillium, does talk about within the tobacco priority area, increasing the number of places that are tobacco-free. So that is definitely one of the strategies that's in the Community Health Improvement Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. You know, our Community Health Improvement Plan has five pillars, five points. The second is reduce tobacco use, and Commissioner Sorenson started to ask you questions about that. I won't bother you with that right now, but, but it is on our website, and anybody can read what it says about where, you know, all the, let's see, what are their, seven strategies underneath Pillar 2? And they're going into pretty good detail regarding what we can do and what we're going to try to do, and, and other efforts that we're going to join, like WHO Empower, WHO Empower, and other efforts that we are going to join and employ. And I think we're doing a very good, a very good job of moving in that direction. But I have a question regarding smoking. Commissioner Sorenson asked about smoking on county property. Can the people, do we allow smoking in county parks now?
Currently, all property that is occupied by Health and Human Services, we do not allow tobacco use.
Therefore, that does not need to be included in this ordinance, it's already there, right?
It would be your choice and.
To duplicate it. Okay, so we don't need to duplicate it, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will note that currently, under Farr restrictions, that there's no smoking in any parks really right now, unless you're inside of a vehicle over a paved surface. So, our weather is dictating our, our smoking policy at the moment. If there are no further questions, staff, I'll, I'll move. If there are no further questions, staff, I'll move to the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1505. And I will call Tamara Miller up to testify. And if you'll state your name and where you're from for the record, and then take it away.
Good morning. My name is Tamara Miller. I'm employed by Peace Health, who's one of the members of the CHIP. I'm here today to talk to you about their proposed amendments to ordinance number 14-19. This ordinance was enacted to promote a safe and healthy community and to limit youth access to tobacco pursuant to the CHIP strategy, prevent and reduce tobacco use. The proposed amendments water down and make less effective the ordinance previously enacted by this body. My understanding is that at least part of the reason some commissioners are considering the proposed amendment is because other cities in Lane County do not have similar restrictions. However, somebody has to be bold, take the lead and be first on advancing ordinances that make our community healthier and to limit youth access to tobacco. I urge you to reject the amendment being considered to allow the use of discount promotions and coupons. Studies have shown that significantly raising the price of tobacco is effective in reducing smoking, especially among youth and low-income adults. Some of these are the most vulnerable in our community. Passing this most, passing this amendment is moving in the wrong direction to accomplish those goals. Price discounts are the largest single category of tobacco industry spending. When discount coupons and offers are combined with in-store discounts, they can reduce the price paid to one-third of the original retail price of the tobacco. The use of coupons makes tobacco appear more affordable to low-income people, including children and youth. The amendment being considered to allow grandfathering locations for tobacco retail licenses within 1,000 feet of schools, I also urge you to reject. Studies show that the younger someone starts to smoke, the more difficult it is to quit. Approximately 90% of smokers start before the age of 18. Marketing to youth and density of tobacco retailers in our neighborhoods affects youth access to tobacco. The more tobacco retailers surrounding a school, the more likely underage smokers are to view tobacco as normal, and the more youth are exposed to retail outlets, the higher the smoking rates. In regard to fines or license suspensions in section 9.772, since inspections are only performed once a year, it is highly unlikely on a 24-month look back that any of the licensed retail tobacco locations would raise, would ever reach the level of the second or third tier of fines or suspensions of their license that are proposed in the ordinance. According to the 2014 Lane County Tobacco Opinion Poll, 70% of registered voters in Lane County support limiting how close tobacco stores can be to schools, and 65% support prohibiting tobacco advertising in retail stores. These are your constituents. I urge you to reject the proposed amendments to this ordinance and to continue to be a leader advancing regulations that make Lane County a healthier community and protect our children and low-income residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the only person I had signed up to speak in the public hearing. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board during the public hearing on the, specifically on the tobacco ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I will open the floor to commissioners' discussion and possible motions. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Miller personally for stepping forward and echoing many of the concerns that people have voiced to me over the last few weeks regarding changes in the ordinance. And just point out one thing specifically regarding the coupons. Currently, we have a situation where if a store is only 100 feet from another store that sells tobacco and is allowed to use coupons, then that's a problem in that people will just walk down the street and pay the lower price at the other store. It's not right, but it is a problem. So I'd like to remind you, and maybe you hadn't heard this, but we have, we'd have an agenda item request for a subsequent board meeting that would, subsequent Board of Health meeting, that would propose potentially a county-wide ordinance that includes operators inside of city limits. Currently, it is only operators outside of city limits. So that would create more of the so-called level playing field and not allow people to walk a few hundred feet to utilize their coupons and therefore make it even as far as each of the retailers is concerned. Just wanted to address that particular one. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. And I will come back with more discussion later in the process. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Thank you very much. One of the things that I thought about in conjunction with today's hearing was what other things we could do to improve the ordinance as opposed to water it down. And one idea that I thought about was this issue of smoking in parks and in county parks, and specifically county parks, and narrowing it down to just the county parks. And so rather than propose a specific set of language, I wanted to phrase it more in terms of having staff come back to the board as part of this process, this ordinance process, to maybe give us some options for language in a subsequent reading. And that would be to have staff come back, provide us with options and specific language that the public could then comment on. So at this time, I'll make a motion to have the staff come back in a reasonable period of time and have another reading of this ordinance and see if there's interest in that motion. I'll just make that motion right now.
Is there a second to the motion?
Before I second that, is this an appropriate time to make such a motion or?
Well, Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Farr, and Commissioner Sorensen, I'm sitting here pondering whether this is such a significant change that it's, in terms of the purpose of the, you know, the ordinance itself, that it doesn't start down the track of essentially a new ordinance because of what it's?
I think it would require a reading upon, in a public hearing, if the board decided to take that language and actually, you know, consider it in a subsequent reading of the measure. But it wouldn't require a public hearing if the board received the information and then decided to reject it and not have a public hearing on it, and then we'd be right where we are now.
Mr. Moakra has got to tell that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sorensen, I might propose, if it's acceptable, that the board, we've scheduled a work session for the board, I believe in late August or early September, do you know that, on the CHIP?
We are not. We don't have it scheduled yet, but it's our plan to.
It's in the works. So we are planning a work session to review the Community Health Improvement Plan, and as part of that discussion, it was our intent to open up a dialogue with the board about a expanded policy related to smoking and tobacco use more broadly in county facilities and adjacent to county facilities, including parks and other buildings, which we do not have in places. As Ms. Hayes indicated, the Health and Human Services facilities are smoke-free, but the other county facilities are not. And so that's, I think, from our standpoint, a broader policy issue that should be discussed and there are certainly pros and cons and implications to setting such a policy. But I'd suggest that maybe we take that up in a work session and have the ability to dig deeper into that particular issue in the coming weeks.
And Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorensen, the other thing that that potentially implicates, and I don't want to be any more specific than this, is that that is a mandatory subject of bargaining and the policy is currently under discussion. And the breadth of that would, at least the way that you've phrased that motion, would certainly implicate that issue. And we've received demands to bargain from all of our bargaining units over it. So it's also got that piece to it.
Well, I think you're jumping ahead about what my motion was. It was to make a motion to have staff report back to the board on options. And I think that you're jumping to the conclusion that A, staff would do that, which I think is a safe assumption, but B, that every bit of what they recommended would be approved by the board, which I think is not likely to happen. So I think you're correct that if we jump down the road two or three steps, we could be at the place. But I'm making a motion to slow this process down by asking staff to come back with an amendment to our existing proposed ordinance. And that would deal with the issue of smoking by the public in Lane County parks.
I misunderstood. I thought, I understood you're making a general motion to make an amendment to ban it, so I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. No, I wanted to get relevant to this ordinance, which is all about tobacco and smoking and implementation of our CHIP, one of which is smoking in Lane County facilities, but narrowing this down, not employees, not all public buildings, not in the waiting room of the maternal health clinic, you know, not any of that, not anything dealing with employees or their compensation or their contracts, but by the public smoking in Lane County parks. And just get an assessment of that, get some options for the board.
So I'm gonna jump in here real quick. The actual ordinance 1505 is in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 9 to address tobacco sale regulation issues. It's not about prohibitions in parks or anything else. If this amendment were to be seconded and approved, we'd basically be going to a first reading of a new ordinance, if you ask me, not continuing on with our work to fix an existing ordinance that has some issues in it. So I would strongly recommend for Commissioner Sorensen to bring this up under agenda items for future agenda items, because I don't disagree with him. It's a discussion the board needs to have and would support a future agenda item on a new, separate ordinance dealing with that, because there are a lot of other issues, but it has little relating matter to retail licensing and regulation of tobacco sales. Commissioner Farr?
Mr. Chair, if not for the timing, I would be inclined to second such a motion. But if we look at Pillar Two, Strategy Three, Bullet Point Two, which Mr. Moakra actually said he's gonna bring all of this back to as soon as the date has been set, says Strategy Two is reduce support, let's see, Strategy Three, excuse me, increase the number of environments where tobacco use is prohibited, and Bullet Point Two is parks and outdoor recreation spaces. I believe that'll come back as a matter of discussion when we talk about the CHIP. And since you've heard that it is a matter of importance, I'm not inclined to second at this point in time, although it is a motion that I would be inclined to second if the timing were correct.
So I will ask, is there a second to the motion at this time? Seeing none, the motion dies due lack of a second. Further discussion?
Sure.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Miller, for your comments. This is an item that I struggle with as a rural commissioner, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting. It's really about fairness. And I appreciate the desire to really work towards improving our health and reducing availability. But the fairness component is, is let's just take, for instance, Dairy Mart built a really nice store in Pleasant Hill. That store is very important to the citizens that live in Pleasant Hill so that they can acquire some of the things that the raised market used to provide there. Well, under this current ordinance here, the owner, Mr. Chambers, is building a ballet facility for youth to also co-locate in that same mall. So under this ordinance, Dairy Mart, who spent an incredible amount of money and a commitment to help serve the citizens there, I would imagine that their percentage of sales is not anywhere near the 25% mark because they're more like a larger store offering a lot more opportunities. But for us to say that you can't sell that store to somebody else and continue to operate it the same way and reduce their value, I struggle with that. And one of the intents, when we started this process a long time ago, I knew that there was going to be some difficulties with inside-the-city limits, that, you know, I was hopeful that we'd be able to put together an ordinance that everybody agreed upon, and it could be countywide. Maybe we'll get there with the additional effort that we supported for staff to bring back in regards to a countywide ordinance. But, you know, rural America, rural Lane County is already struggling. And if we're going to, in some of these cases, these markets are the hub of some of these communities, and if we're gonna say that we don't care about you and that you, you know, jeopardize their existence in these counties, I can't support that. I can support us trying to reduce, in a realistic, fair way, trying to reduce the use in teenage or underage adults or minors, excuse me, children. I mean, as a parent, the last thing I want to see is any of my four kids, you know, taking it up, because they can look at my mother and see all the struggles that she's had over the last 60 years of her life, because she started, I think, when she was 12. And, you know, I don't want to see that happen because I'm sure that there's a possibility that that can, you know, be replicated in their lives. But for me, I'm trying to help us take a good first step, correct some of the problems, and it's really focused around fairness. I mean, I can't take my personal agenda and damn it down somebody's throat because I believe so wholeheartedly that it's the right thing to do and be damned if whether or not, you know, what the effects are on somebody else. That isn't why I took this job. And I took this job to be, you know, to try to be fair to everybody and do reasonable things. And I think what we're asking here to do is a reasonable step. We're asking staff to come back to look at countywide ban on coupons, maybe trying to see if we can get this crafted so that it can be a countywide tobacco licensing piece for the entire county. And then I support Commissioner Sorensen's request that, I don't want to wrap it into this motion, but I would support having a conversation before the board as to, should Lane County take a broader ban to smoking in some of its public areas? Miami-Lane just did it. There's other communities looking at it. So I think that that's a reasonable request to do it. And I think we have processes that I like to try to keep hold of to make sure that we're doing this in a fair and respectful process.
Further discussion, Commissioner Lykan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to just reiterate, I think I've been very, very consistent in my comments going back to last year, and based on that, I have nothing more to add other than the fact I do agree, I was one of the commissioners that did absolutely agree to bring this forward in a work session to maybe look at a countywide ordinance, but also want to continue to work with the state legislature in creating more of a statewide opportunity here. So I have nothing more to add. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the ordinance yet?
Not yet.
No?
We're still in discussion or possible motions. But I will, I will note just a little bit my own discussion here. You know, one of the things that, you know, people don't want us to weaken the ordinance, you know, and there's a perception that somehow or another we're, we need to be bold, take the first step and all that. One of the things people don't look at is what are the consequences of that? And one of the consequences is, you just heard about a five-year battle between ODOT and a property owner over taking. Now, ODOT eventually won, but how much did that cost them? Now, we're self-insured litigation-wise, and if the litigation involves health, it's our Health and Human Services that has to reimburse that account. So if we pass this, if we don't correct some of the flaws in this ordinance, and we do get sued in a taking issue, or we do get sued for interfering with commerce, you know, or we do get sued for taxing locally cigarettes because we left the community education piece in, our health programs are the ones that are going to suffer from the resources we have to spend on that litigation. I'm not, that's not acceptable to me. It's not worth taking that risk. And that's one of the reasons why when we first brought this ordinance forward, almost every one of the changes we're considering now I proposed back in December as an amendment to this, in fact, almost word for word, because I understood the litigation risks that were involved in the ordinance. We have to, as a board, consider that. You know, it's great to be a leader, and we are taking the lead. You know, we are. You know, we are the first county to really take this up, license tobacco, try and provide a revenue stream for enforcement of sales to minors. We were the first organization in the state, really, to ban the sale of cigarettes to minors when we passed this back in December. It was one of the big reasons we moved forward before the state did. So, you know, there's lots that we're doing here, but I feel like, you know, yes, I'm disappointed we have to weaken the ordinance, but it's about weighing in the balance the cost of litigation if we don't correct some of the legal flaws in the ordinance right now. And I believe we would end up in court very quickly if we move forward with enforcement of the ordinance as it stands. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the third reading instead of fourth reading in action. And I believe we have, August 18th is more than 13 days out, so that meeting could be the fourth reading. Is there a motion? Commissioner Stewart.
So you said August 18th?
Yes.
Chair Bozovich?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just as we're looking at scheduling, I was just conferring with Ms. Hayes. We have a plan to ask the Board of Health to convene on the 25th on another item, so if you wanted to use that date, the Board of Health will...
That's great. I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of, excuse me.
Third reading?
Yeah, move the third reading and setting the fourth reading forward in 15-05 for August the 25th, 2015. There is all.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion to the motion. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. And once again, in response to the testimony that we heard today, you know, I'm not interested in weakening or watering down the ordinance at all. What I'm interested in is Goal 3 on our chip, and that is the strategies in Goal 3, preventing and reducing tobacco use. So preventing, we stop kids from starting. Reducing use, we give people incentive to decide to quit smoking. That's what our ordinance is all about. And as we make small adjustments, which we potentially are going to correct once we go with the countywide ordinance, I don't believe we're watering the ordinance down. I think we're making it more practical in its application at this point in time. I'm not in favor of watering the ordinance down by any stretch of the imagination. And while ultimately I likely will vote in favor of at least a couple of the amendments, you know, I still remain strongly and steadfast in the fact that we need to stand behind what we, as a board, have said and what we, as a county, have said, and that is, it's number two, prevent and reduce tobacco use. And you can go to our chip and read all the seven strategies that we've listed under there. We need to adhere to all of them. We need to go forward on all of those seven strategies, which I will not take time to read right now, although I'm inclined to read them. It would take me about 12 minutes to do so. I won't do it. I'll encourage people to read it. It is online. Anyone can read it. Anybody can print it, and anybody can stick it on their office wall, so that everybody working around them can read them all. So, thank you.
Further discussion in the motion?
Just a procedural question. So, will there be a hearing on the August date, or with no changes, then this is the ordinance that will be voted on without a public hearing on August 25? So there's no public hearing, is there?
Yeah, there's no public hearing scheduled for the 25th, because the ordinance hasn't changed from what it was advertised prior to the public hearing we held today. So we've had a public hearing on the language.
Right. And I just heard one of the commissioners say that he didn't know how he was going to vote, because there might be amendments. I'm wondering what kind of process there would be for amendments that would come up.
As in any motion that's before the board, you know, there could be a motion to amend then, and then that would carry it forward to further public hearings and readings.
Such as my motion today, that wasn't seconded, to have the staff bring back
Right.
Options.
Right.
Okay. So there could be other motions.
You wish to make an amendment motion right now to the ordinance, you could.
Okay. So, for example, I say, well, I'd like staff to bring back the options to implement this ordinance countywide. That would be in order. Okay. I'd like to move that we ask staff to bring back options on having this ordinance extend countywide.
Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion dies.
Chair Bozovich, a point of information for me, there was a, I don't know how the board is going to proceed with the various amendments, but one of the things that I was tasked with was, there was a question raised about the banning of coupons and whether there were any legal issues with that in terms of commercial speech and that sort of thing. So I didn't know if it was, I don't know if the board's going to take these up serially, like you did last time, or there may be a motion to adopt them all. I'm just looking for the appropriate place to pass that information along to the board.
It probably would have been during the informational piece, when Ms. Gaffney was presenting to us. The ordinance now stands as a single motion.
Okay.
And we went through the various options sequentially, and then we moved the reading as a single motion, including the options as they got voted on separately. So, right now, and the current motion is as a single package, as it was, the options were chosen last time, including the public school definition and the change in the lookback to two years that was published and promoted prior to this. So...
Would the board like me to, I mean, only take a minute, if you'd like that information?
Is the board interested in hearing that information, or do we want to continue with the action before the board? I'm interested, so go ahead.
Very briefly, I think I mentioned this last time. The question was raised as whether banning coupons or advertising presents any legal issues. And the short answer is, it does. I think the board is pretty safe in terms of time, manner, location. However, there is, as I think Commissioner Sorensen knows, the Oregon Constitution, free speech provision is interpreted more broadly and differently than the federal constitution. The federal constitution assigns different tests to the kind of speech that's involved, political versus commercial versus whatever. I can tell you that there have been, there has been litigation brought, I presume, by tobacco companies, challenging different states' regulation of coupons and whatnot. So I think that you would expect, especially with the tighter constraints under the Oregon Constitution, you could expect similar, I would expect similar challenges. So, no definitive answer, but I think that the issue, there's definitely an area there for someone to litigate.
Yeah. And there's the infamous City of Nissah decision.
I prefer not to go there, but if you insist, I will.
No, it's okay. You know what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Where a certain activity was determined to be free speech and not allow the City of Nissah to regulate. So, Commissioner Farr.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair, thank you. Since this will be coming forward as a single motion, the only option that I will have is to restate my opposition to some of the amendments, which I voted against when the motion was finalized.
You always have the ability to try and bring those back up if you want to. Any further discussion to the motion to approve the third reading instead of fourth? Seen and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you, and we'll see you on August 25th.
Thank you.
So, that concludes our business for the combined Board of Health, Board of Commissioners, so I will adjourn that meeting, and I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, August 4th, 2015. And the first item is adjustments to the agenda. And I will note two things for the board. We have an 11 o'clock time certain, and we also have an executive session today, which I presume we're going to get into probably at the end of the meeting. And I want to check with the board if everybody's okay with going into lunch to carry out our executive session on labor negotiations. Okay, so that will be the plan for today. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seen and hearing none. We already had public comment at the combined meeting, and we already had commissioners' response and remonstrance, and therefore, we're down to if there's any emergency business.
No.
No emergency business at this time. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items in the consent count are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion. And if people want to see the details on the various items in the consent calendar, they can go to our agenda online and click View Material for that item, and they can see the entire background on that item. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that moves us on to Item 6A, which is in the matter of documenting county council's annual performance evaluation and authorizing a change in compensation in accordance with the appointment agreement. And we have Ms. Edwards, our Human Resources Director, with us. And I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Chair Bozovich and Commissioners. Well, as you know, a very short time ago, we were in executive session, and comments were provided about Mr. Dingle's performance evaluation. HR gathered feedback from peers, customers, and subordinates, and the dimensions that were evaluated were knowledge, quality, cooperation, dependability, communication, and management. You've got copies of those comments. And today, if the board determines a positive outcome of the evaluation, we'll go ahead with the process of moving the salary forward.
So discussion from the board?
Commissioner Stewart? Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Marcia, for bringing this. We had, I think, a really good conversation in the executive session, and I just wanted to share publicly that I believe Mr. Dingle has been doing an excellent job. He's always available from, it seems like, 4 o'clock on in the morning, and weekends, sometimes on vacation. So, appreciate your ability to be accessible. I also am, you know, greatly appreciative of the length and extent that you research items and the advice and guidance that you give to the board. I think it's very thorough, very well researched and thought out. I appreciate the extent that you and your office has gone to, you know, kind of clean up what we've talked about, legacy cases that have been on the books, that have been able to get those taken care of off the books, and so that they're not continually being paid out for items. And I appreciate the work that you've done with contracting law, you know, just, you've done a great job, I think, keeping, working on the code updates. You know, we had a pretty extensive run trying to get the Goshen Goal 14 exception, you know, that's something that I hope your office is proud of, considering this the first time. And I think that that type of a goal exception's been taken in the land use arena. So, I'm very pleased and thankful that you're a part of the county, and, you know, I look at your review as a very favorable one in my eyes.
Well, I'll jump in here and just say that, you know, we did talk in an executive session. I'd like to kind of repeat a few things I said here publicly for the public to hear, because you're one of our three employees. We talked about that a little bit this morning, that the auditor is one of our employees, as well as Mr. Mokr Haisi, that we actually hire directly as a committee of the board, which is always strange to have five bosses. And you seem to work with all five of us well. You know, your knowledge and skill sets and work ethic have been praised up and down. But one of the things I want to make particular mention of is the work that you did with our former HR director in developing the managing within the law series for our supervisors. Something that people may not understand is how important it is to prevent risk to the county and to avoid legal cost. That, you know, most people think of legal counsel as when something actually gets to a legal action, you need legal counsel. Really, legal counsel's best job and is most advantageous when it avoids legal risk in the first place. And I actually went through some of the training for managing within the law, and you can look at our records of grievances from our labor unions and even our nonrepresented people, and see at what level they were dealt with and how many, and see the decrease over time, year over year, since you became our county council and since you helped implement that managing within the law series. Because sometimes, it's just a matter of a supervisor not understanding when they were doing something wrong, because they were just unaware of the law. And that risk management and proactive legal thinking that you've brought to county council has been so important to Lane County in preventing legal cost, so we can spend our money rather than on litigation and grievances and everything else, to actually, on services for our citizens. And that is such an important aspect of legal counsel that I think sometimes people don't think of. It's not about when the suit gets dropped and you end up in court. It's about not even having the suit dropped in the first place. And I think that that's probably one of your strengths, is that proactive advice you give us on risk management. Further discussion from the board? So, Mr. Chair?
I would make a motion of a favorable review for Mr. Dingle's evaluation.
And Chair Bozovich, I'd like to make a comment, if I could, before the board votes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Dingle.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the board for the comments that you made, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out that this has really been a team effort. Every single thing, every single accomplishment that you have indicated that you support and approve was, other people played a key role in. You talked to, Commissioner Stewart mentioned the workers' compensation program. I recently sent to the county administrator a look back over the last five or six years, and the decrease in the amount of claims, the cost per claim, the fact that we are now, we're formerly upside down in terms of our ratio of medical claims to indemnity claims. We're right now back to where the industry average is. You mentioned the work on the Goshen matter. All that credit goes to Mr. Voorhees and Mr. Clark. The going through the APM and the code and those other things, that involves people from Human Resources and other people on my staff, most importantly, my support staff. Couldn't get all this done without them. The improvement in the public records process, the efficiency, making us more transparent, more cost-effective, reducing litigation, the managing within the law series. Talk about Human Resources, Ms. Anrude, all the folks at Human Resources, as well as Ms. Nagels in my office. So, I just want to make sure that they get the credit, because it couldn't happen without them. I am the only one there early in the morning. They don't have to do that, but other than that, they are, it is an absolute team effort. And we have a great and collaborative relationship with not only Human Resources, but I think with everyone, and you've heard me say it before, Commissioner Bozovich, managing through litigation is a very expensive and inefficient process.
Thank you. Now, if we can only get you to root for the right college, but...
In a nod to Commissioner Liken, I dialed it down to just a plain orange and black striped tie this year. striped tie this year.
Not quite as loud as your normal.
Just a clarification, the motion is pertaining to Order 150804, is that?
I'm sure that it is, but let me double check. Yes, I guess I could rephrase the motion to approve Order 15 dash 08 dash 4 dash 4.
And I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded again to approve Order 15080404. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Dingell, thank you for bringing that up as part of a team effort. I spent many years as employer myself, and I don't think I would have been able to generate the moderate successes that we had without having a team onboard. And I really appreciate your associates and the attorneys that work with you in the office. The work that they do is outstanding, whether it's in Human Resources, land use, you know, contract, I mean, you name it. And so, but a lot of that is really the fact that, you know, there needs to be a leader in place, and I really appreciate you and the leadership that you've had in your office. I notice, and this is one of the things, I think it really establishes who's a terrific leader in their office. When you're gone, it runs smoothly. And that's, you should be, that's a big congratulations to you as well, and I think to all of our departments. When the leadership is, like, on vacation or whatever and they're running smoothly, that's a sign of a good leader and empowering employee, so I really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Order 15080404 in the matter of documenting County Council's annual performance evaluation and authorizing a change in compensation in accordance with the employment agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, Board.
Moving on to County, before I get there, I'll just make a quick note for, on adjustments to Agenda, I forgot to mention, was review of assignments is going to come before the executive session and other business because we do not have need to come out in a public session, probably after executive sessions. I want to take care of that before we go in. So moving on to County Council announcements.
No announcements, Chair.
And then we'll go to County Administration announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just a few things to share with you. I had an opportunity in the last couple of weeks to do a tour in the field with some of our road crew that work on the chip sealing program, and it was one of the really enjoyable things that I get to do in this role and a way to engage with our staff in the field. It was a beautiful day and learned a lot about the quality of materials that we use in our chip seals. And I was really impressed, particularly given my prior experience in other counties and seeing how chip seals are done in other communities, the quality that we apply and the precision that we apply, the teamwork that happens between the staff. I actually got to ride up on the chip sealer, the machine that lays the rock onto the ground, and learn that the type of rock that we use is actually coated with an oil that helps it adhere better to the road. And was just really impressed with, again, the teamwork and coordination of the staff there. It's a really loud machine, so they can't talk to each other really well, but there's signals that are going on and a lot of great work. And you've since seen emails and thank yous and kudos that we've received from residents, particularly one of note that I recall was from a cyclist, an avid cyclist in the community who was complimenting, complimenting a chip seal. So cyclists are not typically fond of chip seals because in many cases, they can make the road feel rough. It's not as paved of a service. But this avid cyclist in the community was complimenting the chip seal, the quality of the chip seal that we, one of the chip seals we had recently done, and how it functioned like a really smooth road. And so, you know, again, I think as the Board understands, the value of these chip seals is that they're much less costly than an overlay, a pavement overlay would be, and they really stretch out the useful life of a road an additional seven to 10 years if done properly. So, again, I was really impressed and the great staff that we have under difficult circumstances. So as we all know, we've seen reductions in our road crews. We have fewer folks that are working. They're, we're looking at every line item and all of the materials that we purchase and trying to get the most for the resources that we have. But it's another example to me of the fact that we have fewer resources than we need to provide the level of service that our community demands and deserves, really. But we're doing the best we can with those limited resources to make sure that we put quality services and infrastructure in the ground. The other opportunity that I had, and I'm going to go out with the pavement crew because I didn't have enough time to go and actually spend time laying some of the pavement, and so I'm going to do that in the next few weeks. And part of the effort that we're going to be working on along with Ms. Ashbridge, our PIO, is to capture these stories and tell the stories both internally and externally to the community about the good work that our employees are doing. The other thing I was able to do is have lunch with our youth services staff and just, you know, I spend a lot of time in meetings, and one of my favorite things is to go out and meet with the people in the field who are doing the work because you really get inspired around their passion and excitement around what they're doing. And our youth services counselors and mental health specialists and other staff are not always dealing with the easiest issues in our community, but they're doing critical work. And I'll tell you, I just was so impressed with the passion that that group of staff has and how they talked about functioning like a family, what a tight-knit group it was, and how they all rely on each other to serve not only the youth that go through youth services programs, but also the families of those youth. So they're really working together in coordination with those young people that need to get on the right path and the families that are supporting those young people. I was also impressed with the partnerships that they're developing, partnerships with the Rotary. They did a program with the historical cemetery, Maintenance of Historical Cemetery in Springfield, where they got young people from our youth services programs with Rotary volunteers and members to clean up this historical cemetery in Springfield. We also have a program with the NAACP called the Back to School, Stay in School Program, and it's a tutoring and support and mentoring program with NAACP. So some great things happening there, and I could share a lot more. But I just wanted to, I like to relay to the Board and to the public and the rest of our employees, just the great people that we have working here, providing wonderful services to the community. I wanted, Commissioner Bozovic, I'll let him expand on our conversations with city officials, but we had, I think, very productive conversations with the City Manager and Mayor. Our Sheriff, Sheriff Trapp, made the trip along with one of his captains to talk about response, our search and rescue efforts, and patrol, and other public safety services in Florence. And that was, I think, well-received by the officials there. And Marcia Miller, our Public Works Director, also attended, and we talked about work in coordinating with our Land Management Office and Park's investments in both Harper and Vista Park and Archie Knowles Park that we're really excited about. And the final thing I will note, Commissioner Liken and I spent the better part of yesterday, last evening, in recruitment efforts. We're in the final stages of recruitment for an Executive Director for the South Willamette Economic Development Corporation. And so we'll update you as we move forward. We have a Board meeting on Thursday for the SWEFCO Board, and look forward to moving forward and bringing someone onboard to lead that important initiative. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you, then. Moving on to Item 8B, Order 15080405, in the matter of authorizing the County Administrator to appoint a representative from County Council as a fourth non-voting member to the Temporary Internal Audit Committee. And we have our internal auditor, Shonda Miller.
Good morning, Chair Bozovic. Good morning, Commissioners. As stated, I'm here to put forth Order 15080405, which adds a representative, County Council as a fourth non-voting member to the Temporary Internal Audit Committee. And to provide a little background on the committee, the Temporary Internal Audit Committee was established to protect the independence of the performance audit function, and it was also established to assist the County Performance Auditor in developing an initial work plan for Board approval and developing recommendations for a permanent audit charter and permanent audit committee structure in addition to lane manual revisions. And the purpose of adding a representative from County Council is to have someone who can provide legal advice and interpretation for the committee in making and developing their recommendations. At the May 28, 2015 meeting of the committee, the committee approved a motion to approve recommending to the Board adding a representative from County Council.
Any questions? Commissioner Farr.
No questions, just in support of the potential motion. We had had a discussion about it, and while County Council's been present at every single meeting so far, it didn't have to be. With this appointment, they would have to be there. So I'm certainly in favor of this. And Ms. Miller, thank you for the work that you're doing so far on the Temporary Internal, with the Temporary Internal Audit Committee. Things are progressing very nicely, and we have a number of reports that will be coming up subsequent to this one. But just wanted to take a moment to just say that Commissioner Liken and I both sit on the Board as voting members, as does our County Administrator, Mr. Mark Reiske. And we've had independent discussions and very pleased with the direction that the Performance Audit Office is moving. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you very much. I'm curious, Ms. Miller, what is your idea of what the transition would be from the Temporary Committee to a more permanent committee?
Well, the committee is still having conversations about that. I'm going to bring with, from input from the Chair, a proposal to the next Audit Committee meeting, which is August 27, to lay out the next four meetings of the year, how the committee is going to work through making their recommendations and getting, hopefully, to a recommendation by the end of the year.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it's great that Mr. Hinchman is willing to be on the committee, and near as I can tell, everybody involved with this whole process except for Mr. Hinchman gets a paycheck every two weeks from Lane County. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that leads me to an expression of some concern that the purpose of the committee is, in my view, to help you do a good job and to help us do a good job in overseeing you doing a good job. And it seems to me that having one outside person on the committee isn't enough. And I know you're not to be faulted at all because you are the one that suggested maybe we could get the public members of the Budget Committee to apply for this committee, and Mr. Hinchman got on there because of that. And I think that's great. But if you and in your role could be aware of and be thinking about and remind yourself that at least one of the Commissioners up here thinks that we need to have an affirmative action to get outside perspective, I think we should try to do that. And I know that that's not over with and that there is an ongoing effort to get public members on the committee, and I would just endorse that effort. And not everybody has the time to put into this kind of civic activity.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Just reminded that this is the Temporary Internal Audit Committee, and the charge is to act as an advisory role and to work with the County Performance Auditor to develop an initial work plan and to recommend a permanent committee or an ongoing committee. We're scheduled, and we're on time so far, we're scheduled to sunset on December 31. And I'd also like to remind that the makeup of this committee, which includes one member of the Budget Committee, was approved unanimously by this Board of Commissioners. So with that unanimous approval, we are moving forward with the charge given to us unanimously once again by the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Liken.
Nothing more to add. I appreciate, thank you. Commissioner Farr is actually the Chair of the Internal Audit Committee, so I appreciate his comments. Nothing to add. What I'd like to do is just move approval of Order 15 dash 08 dash 04 dash 5, in the matter of authorizing County Administrator to appoint a representative of County Council as a fourth non-voting member to the Temporary Internal Audit Committee.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So moving on to Commissioners' business announcements, the announcements from Commissioners. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Mark Reiske mentioned that yesterday, we did spend the afternoon interviewing what we call three finalists for the South Willamette Economic Development Corporation. Really appreciated the three, and I believe we are scheduled for a South Willamette Board meeting on Thursday for further discussion of the three. What I will tell you is it looks like a couple of them kind of have risen to the top, and so, well, we should have, I'm hoping that we should have a decision made fairly soon on having somebody in place. So it's, I think it's very exciting. Each brought really great strengths, and I really appreciated the vetting process that was led by Steve and Gino Grimaldi and John Reese to vet out the finalists. So they did a nice job with that. Also, last week, hadn't done this in a while, but actually was able to travel down to Cottage Grove to the Oregon Mayors Association, and actually was in my role as Advisory Committee to the Olympic Trials and World Games. And we actually talked to the Oregon Mayors Association Executive Board. It was supposed to be about the Olympic Trials, actually ended up being much more about the World Games. Ben Lanana and Sasha Atwood is the Project Program Manager for Athletes for Track Town, and she herself was a great track and field athlete at Georgetown, went to high school here in Oregon, and talked about how we can engage communities all throughout the state because I think not only the Olympic Trials, but I think what we recognize, the World Games, this isn't just about Lane County and Eugene, this is about the entire state of Oregon and how to engage. And the reception was fantastic. And also want to make note that Independence Mayor, John McCartel, is a former Olympian hammer thrower. In fact, he was known as the Great John McCartel. He was one, he was on the Olympic team in 1980, that did not get to travel to Moscow. But he did tell me, he said, you know, I did throw in the 1983 World Games, and for people to use, it's just kind of gave them a little glimpse. The Olympic Trials is one thing, and he kind of said that we were in a room, and he said, the Olympic Trials is this, the World Games is the room we're in. And kind of gave an idea, 220 countries will be here. And what Ben talked about is that, say, for instance, athletes from Kenya, higher elevation, maybe they want to work out and practice in central Oregon where the elevation is higher and this type of thing. So it was actually very, very exciting. The Oregon Mayors Association seemed to be very, very interested and engaged with this. So the process really continues to move forward. I still kind of pinch myself, the fact that the World Games are coming here in 2021. It is really, really going to be amazing, not only for our area here, but I think for the entire state. What a great showcase. So that's my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Further announcements? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just like to remind everyone that this coming weekend is the Third Annual McKenzie Chainsaw and Art Festival. It's a wonderful event. I got to attend it last year. They bring in artists from around the Northwest to come in and show their talents. It's from Thursday, starts Thursday evening and ends Sunday. There's the possibility you can purchase carvings. They also have, I believe, on Sunday, there's going to be health screenings. There's lots of other participating booths. There's lots of other participating booths, and they also have a concession stand for foods and drinks. So if you got time, it's a beautiful drive up to there, and I was simply amazed at what they can do with the chainsaw and how beautiful the artwork is. It's worth the drive to just go up and catch it Saturday afternoon or Sunday before they pack up and get to see all the art that they produce throughout the weekend. It's very impressive.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair Bozovich. A couple of things that I will mention. The first is regarding Operation 365 Veterans. It's our ongoing effort to house all homeless veterans in Lane County by October 31st of this year, and we're moving very, very strongly in that direction. We're better than halfway there, better than half of the nearly 400 homeless veterans in Lane County have been housed. And it's a multifaceted effort. For instance, five weeks ago, we opened a new house for a veteran's family that was called the Seneca House, and it was funded predominantly by the Seneca Group. And we're also engaging local landlords to help house veterans by reducing the first, the initial expenses for moving into rental housing. We're providing smaller houses, brought a variety of houses. And if, I'm gonna mention Operation 365 Veterans Facebook page. If you go to, if you happen to be a Facebook subscriber, go to the Facebook page, which is Operation 365 Veterans, you'll get a full rundown on the efforts that we're moving forward with on, once again, a multifaceted front. It's the city of Eugene, city of Springfield, Lane County, and other cities inside of Lane County that are really moving forward in a very strong effort regarding housing homeless veterans. Along those lines, I'd like to commend a county employee, Sarah Chinskey, for a report that she put forward just recently. It's a, it's a report on container housing. We're looking about, we're putting forward efforts in producing what are called tiny houses. These are houses that are between 150 and maybe 400 square feet. Currently, building codes don't allow in certain areas for this type of housing to be built. We're working on the building codes, we're working on making certain that HUD money is available for this type of housing. And it's housing that instead of costing the normal $40,000 to $80,000, which multifamily housing will cost, even the subsidized housing, that housing units that maybe will cost $8,000 to $12,000 to build. And it's very dignified housing that provides all the amenities, all of the necessities that people need in a permanent house, that is, a locking front door, for instance, a place to wash your hands and face, a place to wash your dishes, a place to prepare your food, sanitation. And we're moving forward very strongly in those, in that direction. Once again, on a multifaceted front, you can read more about that on Operation 365 Veterans. But Ms. Chinskey has put forward a very nice document that I believe, Mr. Mark Raiske, you forwarded to all Board of County Commission members. It's the, it's called Flexible Housing Solutions from Shipping Container to Living Unit. Right now, it's a, it really is, it sounds a little fanciful, housing people in shipping containers, but if you take a look at this report, it is viable. It's been used in many places in Europe, it's been used in the United States, where 40-foot shipping containers can be transformed into either single-family unit dwellings or into two-family unit dwellings with a shared sanitation and meal preparation site in the middle. Take a look at this, it's called Flexible Housing Solutions, Sarah Chinskey put it together. Much of this work was done on her own time, it wasn't done on county time. There's a passion of hers, and she and I have talked a lot about it. Very well done, and as we move forward with providing the tiny housing for, not just for veterans, and not just for homeless people, but also for people perhaps just getting out of college, where single wide mobile homes perhaps used to be available. When Debbie and I first were married, we lived in a single wide mobile home. You don't see many single wide mobile homes these days. We're looking at houses that are more durable than the old single wide mobile home, houses that will last, and houses that actually provide a level of dignity and a chance for people to move through the housing ladder from emergency housing through transitional housing to permanent housing, giving us more options. And I just wanted to bring those two points up, it's something we're moving forward, you'll hear a lot more about it, not just this year, but in the years to come, ways to get people into housing in an affordable way that we've never addressed before. Thank you.
Further announcements from the board?
I've got a couple. First, I'll just make note that the city of Anita recently enacted an ordinance banning smoking from their parks, so if you weren't aware of that. And we did, the administrator and I did go down and meet with the mayor and the city administrator of Florence last week, and the sheriff and some of his staff were there for the first part of the meeting, where we talked about search and rescue response and other issues that related to public safety, and the fact that they're developing their emergency action plan right now, 500 and some pages, I forgot how many they said. But, you know, one of the things sometimes cities, and I encourage you to talk to all your city administrators and mayors, kind of think about that, you know, statutorily, the counties are charged with emergency management. We only have one employee in our emergency operations group. So cities kind of need to also be preparing too, and preparing their own plans and not depending on the county necessarily to be ready to step in. So I would encourage you to talk to your cities about where they are with their emergency operation plans. And then we also talked about some coordination issues relative to the UGB and development and notifications between county and the city, and the shared responsibilities there that Ms. Miller with Public Works was there for. And of course, I want to make sure everybody's aware, it's time for Scandinavian Festival again, starting Thursday at 10:00 a.m. with Finnish Day and working on through the weekend to Sunday for Danish Day. Everybody's gotta get out to Junction City and get their April skippers, you know, can't just, summer's not summer without that.
Did you say the start day is Finnish Day?
Yeah, yeah. It starts on Finnish Day, don't you? It's always done that. So not that I have a whole lot of Norwegian in me, Bozovich isn't exactly Finnish, but I enjoy it every year, so I encourage people come out. Interesting, if anyone doesn't know the history of that festival, it was originated way back in the 60s when I-5 was being built and Junction City was essentially being bypassed. And they wanted to have a festival to draw people into Junction City, and it's become the identity of Junction City, the whole Scandinavian. I mean, if, you know, most of the businesses are Scandinavian themed, or they have signage that looks Scandinavian, and it's meant a lot to that town to have that festival. And I'm sure that, you know, the Chainsaw Festival will be fun, but, you know, take a day, go to the Chainsaw Festival, take another day, come up to Junction City for the Scandinavian Festival. So any other announcements from the board?
Commissioner Lichen.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I just want to make note that my representative, John Lively, just walked over, so Representative Lively, welcome. And on the emergency management, I thought, I want to say, I thought that was a great point. We have one person, it's interesting now that Eugene and Springfield Fire and Life Safety is now one, so Chief Groves now oversees the entire operation of Fire and Life Safety. And then in the cities, with cities, she's usually in the Fire and Life Safety takes the lead on the emergency management side, working in conjunction with police. So that's, that was a very interesting point, and I really appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Any further announcements?
We're running about a whole two minutes early, but I think I'm going to jump the queue by that much, and we'll move on to item 9B, which is a report on the Bureau of Land Management's Resource Management Plan Proposals and Analysis Presentation. And I'll let Mr. Caldwell get his information loaded over here. But for folks not aware, the Bureau of Land Management's preparing a draft resource management plan at this time, and this is in place of the original Western Oregon plan revision that was the result of a successful lawsuit against the federal government by the ONC counties and other folks for not carrying forward the ONC Act. And there is a four-volume set up in the commissioners' offices that, when you stack them together, is about this high, that's the draft plan. And we're fortunate to have Mr. Caldwell come talk to us, who's a former BLM employee and now is a self-employed, I guess, analyst that understands this stuff much better than I do and can simplify it much better than I can. And I appreciate you coming here to talk to us about the draft resource management plan, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman.
I think I said Caldwell's.
Caldwell, that's our.
I do that all the time. Caldwell Banker just kills me with your name, so.
I appreciate this opportunity to come share somewhat of a summary and a synthesis of this EIS of, you know, the federal government puts out four volumes, 1,500 pages, 10 pounds of EIS, also, which we'll leave with you if you have not seen it. We've summarized this in 15 pages, and some of those highlights will be in this presentation. And I've tailored a little bit to some statistics about Lane County and what this means to So to understand the ONC forest, you really need to understand the relationship of the federal government owning land and the relationship with the county. That 57% of Lane County is in federal ownership, largely of the Forest Service, but you do have ONC lands that are administered by the Forest Service, as well as about 10% of the county, which is administered by the Bureau of Land Management. In key to this is that the federal government does not contribute to your tax base despite this very large ownership. You can see on the map in the lower right, the darker the color, once you're up in the red, you're up at about 50% federal ownership. So most of, particularly in the rural part of the state, the federal government owns most of these county lands. I would like to give people perspective of what makes the ONC lands unique, you know, that there's Forest Service lands, there's national parks, there's U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service lands, but why did these lands get this unique designation? Originally, there was gonna be a railroad constructed up the Willamette Valley that these lands were allocated to a company to sell, turn into private lands, private hands, and develop the communities of the West at the turn of the century. That failed, and so the federal government took those lands back into federal ownership, and it was years of debate of what are we going to do to settle the West with these lands? And so the first part of the ONC that's unique is the sustained yield mandate. This was revolutionary at the time. It's the first federal forest management law ever enacted, and it's simply that you will not harvest any more than you are growing off this land. So this was really a landmark piece of legislation. And that the nature of the deal was, since most of these lands were gonna remain in federal ownership and not contribute to the tax base, the deal in 1937 was to share the timber sale receipts with the counties, the 18 ONC counties. So Forest Service doesn't have this mandate, none of the other federal lands, it's why these 2.4 million acres are very, very unique. It's important to know, as you read the BLM's EIS, their definition of reserve and the design of their alternatives, in the context of these land use allocation, the term reserve indicates that the BLM or Congress has reserved these lands within the allocation from sustained yield timber production. So if that reserve label comes on, you are not going to receive long-term revenues generated from that portion of land base. In many of the design of the alternatives, there's upfront decisions on the levels of BLM considered four alternatives plus what they call the no-action alternative. The no-action alternative is their current resource management plan, which is based on the Northwest Forest Plan. It's as written, it's not as been implemented. The timber program under the Northwest Forest Plan on the BLM lands has never been successfully implemented. It's been largely a thinning program. BLM's done three evaluations indicating that their current practices are not sustainable. So you look at the range of alternatives, and what's in brown, that's the, that's the level of reserves, and what's in yellow, that's the lands allocated to sustained yield management. This, in my opinion, is a fairly narrow range of alternatives. It's not thoroughly testing what you can do with sustained yield management to simultaneously achieve both timber and conservation objectives. The preferred alternative, which is, BLM likes to say it's a very temporary decision, they had to put their finger on one of these alternatives wholesale and identify it as a preferred, and they selected Alternative B as their preferred for the draft EIS. To show the nature of these reserves, one of the components of the purpose that they're doing this, this land management plan is to provide a network of large blocks of late successional older forest for spotted owls. Alternative C uses longstanding scientific standards for size and spacing of those blocks. The dark blue are the large blocks, the yellow is the BLM lands, the greenish on the left is the Forest Service, and the Elliott is in the lower left. So Alt C uses this scientific standard, this is the size and spacing that's needed for spotted owls. The preferred alternative, they did not apply the size and spacing criteria, it was only could this land develop into a large block. So you can see the coast range in your area is heavily, heavily reserved under Alternative Reserve volume and sustained yield volume, the brown is the level of harvest that would come from the reserves. These are primarily thinning treatments to enhance the, accelerate the development of older forest and developing structurally complex forest. These will diminish over time as those thinning opportunities decrease. What's in yellow is the sustained yield harvest, that's the harvest from those small percentages you saw earlier in those pies, that is a repeated cycle of harvest that will be sustainable over time and will generate you revenue on a sustainable basis over time. So you look at, no-action alternative is the current plan, and that only Alternative C is the only one that proposes a higher harvest level than the Northwest Forest Plan. All the others are less. Harvest volume by district, this is getting at the regional distribution of the harvest, that the no-action alternative Northwest Forest Plan, this is the distribution you can see across the BLM districts, it's fairly even distribution. Under Alternative B, you can see the Salem district has a dramatic increase. The land bases that, the sustainable harvest are primarily located in the northern half of the state, they're mainly where there's younger forest. And so Salem would see a dramatic increase under Alternative B versus the Northwest Forest Plan. Eugene stays about the same, but your, the areas and the counties to the south of you, they have pretty severe declines over the Northwest Forest Plan in the level of harvest that's proposed, particularly the sustainable harvest. Payments to counties, the $134 million average payments from 1960 to 2011, that was generated by the governor's panel during that exercise. Comparing that point to the alternatives, the high is Alternative C at 50% of that historic level. Alternative D is 14%. The preferred Alternative B is 27%. We look at, what does this mean for Lane County? This is over time during the era when timber sale receipts were generating the payments to counties. And then the Northwest Forest Plan was enacted, and there was an initial transition payment called the Safety Net, and then Secure Rural Schools come in. So you can see the fluctuation expressed in millions of dollars, these are nominal dollars, the payments that were made at the time, they're not in today's dollars. So if we look at Alternative B, Lane County would receive about $5.5 million, about what you're receiving today in Secure Rural Schools. But what's very interesting is BLM is still producing largely a thinning sale, timber sale program. And if you took 2012 receipts of $11 million and distributed across the counties, you'd be seeing a payment of $1.7 million. It will take years for a transition plan, for whatever plan is developed. It will take years for a transition plan for whatever plan is developed if Secure Rural Schools is not renewed. So busy graphic, I'm going to take it apart for you a bit of a time. Take a look at the top part, and I'm sorry, these colors washed badly in this. The top bar represents the northern and coastal districts at Salem, Eugene, and Coos Bay, kind of the moist forest. The southern interior is Roseburg, Medford, and Clamath Falls, which is in the yellow. You can see the no-action alternative had roughly an even distribution north to south in terms of jobs. And the bottom bar is the total jobs north to south. These jobs are reflective of the total harvest volume. It's the sustainable harvest level. It is the thinning that will be done in reserves, which will diminish over time. So these jobs will be at their peak, they will decline over time. You can see under alternative B that in the north here, it's not much of an effect, but there's a severe effect in the south because of the type of harvest that is being proposed under alternative B. So you need to remember, as an ONC county, you're part of a pool. It's not just the harvest that happens in Lane County, it's what happens on the ONC and PD lands administered by the BLM that matters. So the jobs picture is also shifting from Northwest Forest Plan. Harvest valuation, if you actually read that 1,500 pages of the EIS, it was quite shocking to me in that they used 2012 timber sales as the benchmark to compare the alternatives, which was $21 million. And they made the statement, well, all these alternatives are an improvement over the status quo. Well, their status quo is not compliant with their existing resource management plans, it's not sustainable, it's a low point. Comparing it to the no-action alternative, only alternative C produces higher valuation. And the total valuation is a direct translation into jobs and the economy of the counties. So using no-action, Alt-C is the only one that's higher, Alt-B is lower than the Northwest Forest Plan. They also did something that's fairly new in federal EISs, they did non-market valuation, which was very interesting. It's a little disconcerting in that they treat these dollars as all dollars and there's real dollars and there's theoretical dollars. The recreation values are based on willingness to pay and visitor usage days on the BLM. So they take surveys of what would you pay to go fishing? I'll pay $75 to go fishing. It's theoretical. Those recreation dollars do not come directly to the county. Certainly, they produce part of the economy and the livability, I'm not trying to downplay that, but they're not direct real dollars. The carbon calculation in this plan, as was done in 2008, is very interesting, is this full range of alternatives, the margin of difference between the alternatives and sequestering carbon is smaller than the error in these estimations. They're basically identical with the ability to measure this. There's not a substantial difference in carbon store amongst these alternatives. They are all high in carbon store. But the bottom line thing is people treat this as an either/or, and this is not an either/or. This is something that can happen simultaneously. You can manage these lands for timber production and provide this high level of carbon and you can provide these recreational opportunities. The only aspect of what BLM is proposing in recreation opportunities that is somewhat at conflict with timber production is managing for remoteness values, which there's very, very few lands on the BLM that you can truly call remote in the context of the checkerboard. I want to talk about the spotted owl recovery plan in critical habitat. This is not a widely understood story. I need to take you back to 2008 and the set of plans that were developed up to that point, that the Fish and Wildlife Service, the Forest Service, and the BLM worked together to develop a recovery plan and critical habitat, and BLM adopted that as their preferred alternative. The policy level for endangered species was uniform. The resource management plan reflected the regulatory policies. Those policies were all withdrawn early in the Obama administration. And in 2011, a new recovery plan was issued. And in 2012, Northern Spotted Owl Critical Habitat was issued. And then the BLM began the planning process. The recovery plan has two significant recovery actions that affect timber production on the BLM lands. Recovery action 32, land managers should work with the service to maintain and restore high-quality spotted owl habitat stands. BLM embedded this in the design of their alternatives. The only thing they varied was how they defined it. They used primarily age-based definitions of older forest and they placed those in reserves as an upfront decision in response to this recovery action. Recovery action 10, conserve spotted owl sites at high-value spotted owl habitat. BLM did not incorporate this explicitly in the design of their alternatives, but they did an interesting sub-alternative on this. Recovery plans are advisory in nature, but when they issue critical habitat, which does have the effect of law, they point back, well, we assume this recovery plan exists. So it's, the advisory nature is a wink and a nod, basically. The agencies are very strict in the interpretation of these recovery actions. They want to put forest timber sales that will pass through the consultation process and actually occur. So as I mentioned, recovery action 10, management of habitat around owl sites. BLM took their alternative B and did a sub-alternative. The harvest land base was 26%. Under alternative B, with 74% in reserves. When you placed into reserves the existing and historic owl sites, that harvest land base is reduced 14%. And when they calculated the sustainable harvest level, it was cut nearly in half. So these are things that, it's what I call the plan under the plan. When BLM presents a timber sale, it's within an owl site, it's going to have to go through consultation. They'll read the recovery plan and there will be negotiation. It really plays against the certainty of this plan of having regulatory policies that are not consistent with land management plans. And none of the alternatives that BLM analyzed did a full assessment of the combination of the recovery plan and critical habitat. That's not revealed in the EIS. In 2012, spotted owl critical habitat was designated, 53% of the BLM lands were designated as spotted owl critical habitat. And it's a little difficult to see, but in the split between reserves and the harvest land base, on the left-hand side, that's the overlay of critical habitat. So over a third of the harvest land base, the sustained yield land base has, is within critical habitat. When you look closely at the design of BLM's large block reserve network and you look at critical habitat, they reach different conclusions as to how big it should be and where it should be placed on the landscape. So in effect, you have a plan on top of a plan and it's larger than either one of them So this overlay of the regulatory policy, it really fights against the predictability and certainty that everybody is seeking from a new land management plan. You won't know what those effects are until timber sales begin to happen and how the consultation process does or does not work and approving those projects. Fish and Wildlife Service recently revised their regulations and when they consult with BLM at the plan level, they don't have to issue a statement on potential take for the alternatives. That's postponed till project level. So even when they sign the plan, you won't have a good idea of the level of restriction of regulatory policies. As I mentioned earlier, BLM had to select one alternative as what they call the preferred alternative in the draft. They have to put their finger on one whole alternative wholesale. They would have rather not done it, but it's in the regulations, so they had to. The way they like to talk about what happens from this point forward is Lego blocks and that there's all these components of the alternatives, different large block designs, different criteria for older forest reserves, different reparian strategies, management of owl sites, the cycle of harvest, the intensity of harvest, and the different amounts allocated to recreation. So those are all parts and pieces that as they develop a proposed RMP for the final EIS, they want comments, tell, give us feedback on which of these components works for you. But a very important fact is what, when they, BLM issues a draft, it establishes sideboards. So, and it defines the range of what's possible for the RMP. So a strict interpretation would mean no more than 32% of the land will be allocated to sustained yield management because that's as far out as they tested. I can test there more is possible. And it's through the application of sustained yield management. And if impressions of sustained yield management is clear cuts to you, I want to correct that notion as nothing could be farther from the truth. Sustained yield management can take a variety of forms. Clear cuts are truly efficient and they have an appropriate place on the BLM checkerboard intermixed with private industrial lands that the public has absolutely no access to. It makes sense to do clear cuts in some circumstances. It makes sense in southwest Oregon to do uneven age management where you have a fire resiliency problem. And that uneven age management on a sustainable basis can moderate that effect. And there's everything in between with pre-retention to provide legacy of the previous stand into the future stand and making very interesting, complex forests very quickly. So the first place, and the Association of ONC Counties is still working on their comments, but we've been very public with this before the comment period ever opened. We think sustained yield management should be applied in the large block reserves. The standard that they set in their purpose and need is to maintain a network of late succession forest in large blocks. You can maintain a network of late succession forest in large blocks through a rotation of sustained yield management that the primary objective is producing habitat, but you're doing that on a cycling basis within those large blocks. The next area is the older forest reserves. They use very blanket rules for older forest. And they have done very interesting analysis looking at the relative habitat capability of that older forest and their owl analysis, which shows some of this has very, very low biological power. So there's older forest, particularly this mature forest is essential. If you look at the BLM's type of harvest in these land bases, these are very young land bases and they are going to be forced to cut very large amount of acres to sustain a harvest level in the near term because they don't have enough current mature forest in the cycle of harvest to maintain a longer rotation of harvest. So adding some older forest with low biological capability. BLM did not test the application of, by adding some older forest, the implications of being able to do longer rotations from the get-go. That long rotations can simultaneously produce habitat and replace very high-quality habitat within 50 years if done correctly. So sustained yield management definitely through longer rotations. It's also from the product side, when you're harvesting very young stands, that's the same product that industry is producing, small diameter logs of fairly low value versus large diameter logs with very high value that will be scarce over time. And then finally, resiliency treatments based on need. In southwest Oregon, they trumpeted, yeah, we have a fire problem, we have a resiliency problem, these forests are out of whack. They did not by design quantify the size of the breadbox here. How much of that forest is in need of resiliency treatments and prioritize them and do a design around resiliency treatments. It was just a byproduct of doing spotted owl reserves and uneven age management and how did it respond for fire resiliency. They did not design it upfront. And that if you have a resiliency problem, that you have a threat of loss, acceleration of the rate of those treatments, so they're accomplished not in 40 or 50 years, but in 20 or 30 years would make sense. They did not test that sort of alternative. So these are all suggestions that the Association of ONC Counties is going to be making in their comments. We feel these are things that will still have very good outcomes on the conservation side and will greatly improve the economics and job circumstances of an alternative. So commenting, the comment period was extended by 30 days. The entire congressional delegation and many organizations requested 120-day extension BLM at the nine days before the comment period closed, added 30 more days to the comment period, which is now August 21st. These are suggested issues if Lane County is going to submit comments that are apparent. To me, the range of alternatives is too narrow. The purpose of an EIS is to fully explore a range of reasonable alternatives. And we see there's a lot more that could be tested in an EIS. The beauty of an EIS is it's not to pre-decide, it's to test concepts and see how it plays out across all resources. You should be concerned about sustained yield management because that's the long term. Many proposals about the ONC have reverted to short-term fixes that won't last. And that sustained yield management is the foundation tied to these lands. And that there should be a careful eye that sustained yield management is a high priority. Certainty in timber sales, the style of management, if it's not very obvious in the EIS, BLM will have to increase the level of acres harvested higher than what the 2008 RMP would have been. 2008 RMP was about 70,000 acres in a decade of regen harvest. These are up at nearly 100,000 acres under alternative C. So many more acres need to be treated. So the certainty with the regulatory policies and the style of management, it does no good for you to have a plan that is not fully executed and delivers those receipts. BLM and their purpose and need statement, the reason for the plan, they don't even mention revenue as an objective, it's a byproduct. I think that should be a strong response from the counties that it's just a misreading of the law. The second half of the ONC Act, that was the purpose. And telling your story of the type of services that you use those funds to provide in this community and the other counties, I think is a compelling story. Decision will be summer of 2016, the 2016 30-day comment period. They were planning on being done in spring and at a meeting last week, they announced, we think it's now summer. So about 200,000 timber sales. And if Secure Rural Schools is not renewed, this is what you'd be relying on for county Sorry, that was dense.
Yeah.
One more question.
Chris, your like and Commissioner Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Chris, thank you very much for your presentation. A couple of questions. And I appreciate the four items that really we should focus in on. The last one is a huge concern, obviously, and that's the revenue piece. I don't believe it is a byproduct at all, and it shouldn't be. But I would kind of like to zero in on, I thought it was interesting when you brought up the using of the non-market valuation techniques. Recreation is really 223 million? What's industry? I'm just.
I don't know.
Well, if it's 223 million, industry must be 300 million.
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious, I thought that's interesting how they would have come up with that number. And I bring that up because it seems to me that when you look at the recreation side compared to the industry, and I agree with you, they can absolutely coincide, they've been coinciding for decades. And so I, it shouldn't be us against them, this should be a working, a working together in progress. And the other question I have is how do we explain then, two weeks ago, we had International Paper and Seneca announce a combined $160 million investment in their respective facilities? I would strongly suggest that they believe there's something in the future, otherwise why would they be spending that kind of money? The other is.
If I could interject, one thought I did leave out, under alternative B, this is only 20% of capacity of, the capacity of this forest is what they're proposing. There is so much more potential for management of these lands. So you're only at 20% of what's possible. And I'm not to suggest that these lands be timber exclusively for timber production. And I'm not to suggest that these lands be timber exclusively for timber production. You can do this simultaneously at very high levels, much higher than 20% of capacity.
If we were working with the Northwest Forest Plan right now, I think I'd be leading a parade down, down the street because we're not even close. That was proposed 20 years ago. And the other, the other piece, now this wasn't necessarily in your, in your, your presentation, but it is in the report. And, and I thought this is interesting because the suggestion is that there would be a decline in private harvesting of 68% if we move forward on a, on an increase of 250 million board feet. I, I find that to be a little bit, I, I'd be really curious where they came up to that number. And here's an hint, and I, and I bring this up because what if, and I believe this is a real possibility, what if all of a sudden across laminated timber industry begins taking off? Then you have wood products in a sense replacing skilled concrete, not on all, all, all major commercial buildings, but on some, that could create an entire new market where I don't believe this 68% decline would even be happening at all. In fact, if anything, you probably, if you're going to limit what you would have harvesting on public lands, I could see your private lands even increasing even more just to fulfill that. And, and with the increase in automation, that's happening over and over in our, in our, in our mills in particular. I, I just, I'm just not sure I, I understand that part. So, do you have a response maybe to that or how they even came up with that number?
I don't know how they came up with that number, but we're questioning that number, you know, in a, in a state that produces 4 billion board feet. And you suggest that another couple hundred million is going to have a dampening effect on prices. I, I just don't understand that. And it's not well explained in the EIS.
Well, I, I appreciate your presentation. I mean, those are a couple of things I just wanted to, to bring out in, in particular. I just thought that valuation was really interesting. And I'll be curious on how they came up with 223 million dollars in recreation and, and stop the us against them. I mean, that's the part, I think that bothers me as much as anything. I mean, Commissioner Stewart obviously grew up in a timber family. I grew up in a timber family. You know what? There was never an us against them. There, there was so much recreation involved in the, in, in the public lands, those who worked in the industry used the public lands for recreation constantly, constantly, but yet also were able to support their families. So, I, I appreciate, those are a couple of things I just wanted to kind of bring out and, and just kind of get your, your thoughts as well. So, appreciated, thank you.
You know, the, the BLM and they, they did produce a number of workshops and, but if you watched how they presented the material, it was very stovepipe. They would report individual statistics and much of my questioning was, I'd like a synthesis. You folks have studied this. What do you see as cause and effect? What can happen, you know, simultaneously at what levels? And, and they would not lend an opinion on that. So, that's part of my writing of this little paper. It's to begin to try and connect these dots. And it's not that their non-market valuation is wrong, it's just how it's characterized.
Well, thanks for going through all those, those piles. And the paper industry also thanks the federal government for the use of the, the product as well, but thank you very much.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, this is very interesting to see these slides and I was wondering if you could email those slides to us.
We, I will leave, I left a CD with this side-by-side report.
Okay.
And that.
Good. Maybe Ms. Jones could distribute that to the commissioners. That would be really helpful.
And I'd be happy to answer follow-up questions.
Excellent. Regarding your own background, I understand you're a BLM, retired BLM forester. Who are you working with now?
So, I represent the Association of ONC Counties as a cooperator with, in the BLM planning process.
Okay.
I also have a consulting firm and I, I provide consulting services to the organization.
Okay. And then regarding the overall membership or not membership, but ownership of the ONC lands, my understanding is there are some lands that are administered by the Forest Service and some are in another status called the Coos Bay Wagon Road lands. Are those lands, the Forest Service ONC lands and the Coos Bay Wagon Road lands, are they part of this EIS?
The Coos Bay Wagon Road lands and the public domain lands administered by the BLM along with BLM ONC lands, that's what this EIS addresses. It does not address the 400-some thousand acres of ONC lands that are intermingled from the land, starts at Mount Hood and just wraps down the Cascade and around the southern end of the state.
Okay.
There's a checkerboard within the Forest Service of ONC lands.
So, the.
And that's separate.
The public domain BLM lands and the Coos Bay Wagon Road lands and the BLM administered ONC lands.
Right.
Are all in this, but what's not in it is the Forest Service lands. Now, are they, are these Forest Service lands, and just to be clear, I'm talking about Forest Service lands that traditionally have been managed by the BLM because of their proximity to the BLM ownership. And it's a very small percentage, it's under 1%, but I was just curious whether those ONC lands were included or not in the EIS.
Are, are you meaning the controverted lands? It's about 400,000 acres.
Yes.
That's on Forest Service, that is not part of this EIS.
Okay.
Those are Forest Service administered lands.
Okay. Now, one of the reasons that I gather this is being done, all of this federal process and planning, is that in 2011, the Fish and Wildlife Service published a report that my quick Google search says is April 7, 20, excuse me, April, no, just 2011. And it's a report stating that the estimated population decline of the northern spotted owl is between 0.4 and 7.1% annually. So, in, in 2011, after all this planning and all this litigation and all this legislation and all the congressional writers and leading up to this moment in 2011 where this scientist, R.J.A. Davis writes a report and says, the estimated annual decline is somewhere between 0.4, which is to say a little more than zero, and 7.1% decline. Then they come out with the, Fish Wildlife Service comes out with the final designation of critical habitat, which reduces the federal land that's available for timber harvesting because that would conflict with the, with the designation of critical habitat. And, and they do that in, in 2011, 12. And I think you put that on the, as a marker up there. Then in April, April 5, the Fish and Wildlife of this year, the Fish and Wildlife Service comes out and says, overall northern spotted owl population decline is now determined to be 2.9%. Within the range that they predicted in 2011, somewhere between 0 and 7, and now they come out and say, it's 2.9. Okay. Now, I'm going to round that up to three for simplicity purposes, but I'm still having trouble figuring out how any of the options here, any of the alternatives, turn around the decline that they, the Fish and Wildlife Service just announced is a decline in the annual now 3% decline in northern spotted owls. How, how can this, any of these options, if they all contribute to a further decline, how can any of them actually go forward?
Well, I think this is where the BLM analysis is quite interesting and, and in some respects counters what the Fish and Wildlife Service came out with. There's no doubt about it, the, the owl population is in decline. Applying that in broad-brush statements, it's different circumstances in different places. The coast range, there is next to nothing that BLM could come up with, even the no-harvest scenario, is a precipitous decline in the coast range. It's because of barred owl influence, it's not because of land management. So, despite what management occurs there, the barred owl is causing that decline. And BLM makes statements that there is nothing they can do through forest management that can give a competitive edge to spotted owls over barred owl.
What about barred owl management?
Barred owl management, certainly. And BLM is, is providing money to Fish and Wildlife Service for their barred owl control study.
Well, if, if the Fish and Wildlife Service says, hey, we're supposed to recover this species, we're supposed to, under the Endangered Species Act, we're supposed to not have a decline each year in the number of northern spotted owls, we're supposed to actually have an increase in the number so we can do with northern spotted owls what we did with the, with the bald eagle. We can take the bald eagle off the list and there's no endangered species status for the, for the bald eagle because we, or the, or other species that have, and very few, but some have been recovered and they're not, and they're not going to go extinct. So, so I'm just curious, what can we do as local officials to advocate for and, and make sure that we don't spend and spin our wheels for five to six years while this is being adjudicated as to which one of these alternatives the, the administration picks, which all of them, as far as I can tell, contribute to a counter-policy to another very strong federal policy, namely to recover these species?
Well, I'd, I'd disagree to some extent and I will lean on the BLM analysis for that, that what was, has traditionally been done in the 2008 EIS was replicated in this one. There's measures of spotted owl recovery, large block network of late succession forest, the ability to distribute or migrate between large blocks in the lands between there, providing fire resilient habitat in southwest Oregon, so you're not losing sites to, to natural disturbance. And that all of the BLM alternatives pass with an A on all of those criteria. The only thing that's new in the BLM analysis that Fish and Wildlife Service developed was these projections on, on population. Those are new tools, those are immensely complex models. I, when I was a BLM employee, I sat for a couple of years of meetings of that and I will tell you that is complex stuff. And that if you, the main lesson I take from that is the barred owl influence overrides what you can detect for land management. BLM has no authority to manage the barred owl population, that's Fish and Wildlife Service's responsibility. The BLM has responsibility for managing the forest. Suggestions that the, the association has made from very early on is just for a reference analysis, eliminate this barred owl effect so we can see what do different land management strategies provide for the spotted owl in a singular way? And then barred owl control is a separate issue. So, I, I think the BLM alternatives from a land management standpoint, they are all very, very strong strategies. And I don't think they've given sustainable yield management a fair shake to see, could you produce more and still have these good conservation outcomes? It's a dilemma with the barred owl.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass if there's more questions from others, but I'll have some others too.
Commissioner Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Chris, for being here today. I appreciate my colleagues' interest in this. We participated in asking for an extension of the time to comment and I felt it was important that we would try to gather information if we're going to make comments. So, hopefully at the conclusion today, we're to give direction to, to ask our staff to, to draft up some comments so we can present by the 21st. You know, we, we got in this position, my understanding, years ago when there was a settlement agreement in federal court that, um, the Northwest Forest Plan was not adequate plan to manage the ONC lands by, is that correct?
Correct.
And there was an agreement that the BLM would go through a process to try to come up with a plan that would be adequate. So, i.e., they went through an extensive eight or 10-year process that developed the Western Oregon Plan Revision, was adopted and then shortly thrown out because it didn't include collaboration. And you can kind of see by the Northwest Forest Plan that, you know, your graph showed that we're not hitting a portion of what the Northwest Forest Plan called for under the current management, is that, is that true statement too? And so, here we are today on our second attempt at trying to adopt a resource management plan that does comply with the settlement agreement, that would comply with the ONC Act, is that correct?
Um, I think that is open to debate whether these alternatives would, would, it's certainly the position of the ONC Counties.
I mean, that, that was the intent when we started the process. My understanding, when not we, us, the, the BLM started the process with the settlement.
Meaning back in 2005.
Yeah, in 2005, was to come up with a, a plan that would meet the agreement and somewhat reflect the ONC Act, is that correct?
That's correct. There, there's one additional piece of information that people overlook. BLM had two evaluations by the time that settlement agreement was signed saying, we're not in compliance with our plan. It's a federal requirement that you comply with your plans and if you don't, fix it. And so, the settlement agreement was helpful, it provided a lot of funding to make the 2008 RMP happen. But BLM is required to maintain plans that are consistent with their laws and are consistent with their policies. And they were clearly in violation of that.
Right. And, and I guess when I see the information that you presented to us and the process that the BLM has gotten to for projections of what the outputs are going to be, I mean, right now, we're basing it on the no, you know, the alt, was it?
No action.
Which is the Northwest Forest Plan, which we know we're not hitting by immense numbers. And then we throw out these alternatives and your analysis shows that at best, they produce less than 50% what alternative B because you factor in the critical habitat, it reduces the, the amount available, is that correct?
Well, if, if, if the policies of managing owl sites was taken to full force, yes, that would be cut in half. It, it depends on what the BLM adopts, if it's an upfront decision or if they don't and it happens through consultation, then you won't know. But yes, that, that is flying in the face of certainty.
So, the point I'm trying to make here is, is that through this whole process, I don't feel any better about this management plan somewhat reflecting what the law reflects. And so, I think ultimately that, that's a concern. And the other piece that's concerning too is, is that they, you know, one of the approaches that we've tried to, as an ONC organization, is say, why can't we do a lighter touch on more acres? So, if they were to create, if they were hypothetically at all possible of trying to create the volume that they're predicting under alternative B, what kind of a rotation would they have to have for their, their harvestable lands to generate the volumes? If they were really truly trying to generate the volumes, what would they have to do?
Well, and that, that is part of our comments and it's not readily revealed in the EIS. The association had to deploy a data from the BLM, which was not published in their EIS. There's no maps of what the harvest looks like, the age classes, and through my work, we did investigations on that. Normally, the BLM, up until this time, had maturity criteria, you don't harvest below when a stand becomes mature. And particularly up north here, that's anywhere from 90 to 150 years. So, you're, you're carrying stands for a very long time and they're simultaneously providing habitat. These land bases that they have for the near term, for the next 80 years by BLM's own admission in their EIS, they will not be able to implement long rotations. And that the minimum harvest age is lowered to 50 years and substantial amount of this harvest comes from stands between 15 and 80 years of regen harvest. When you do that of younger stand types that have not yet matured in size, you have to cover more acres to produce the sustainable level of harvest. So, a little more older forest would go a long way towards alleviating that issue.
That, that's my fear and, and the information that I've received is, is that, you know, if they're able to implement it and if they truly want to try to hit the, hit the mark, we're going to see the BLM potentially managing their harvestable land like Warehouser. And I don't think that the folks that, you know, the critics of this is going to be overly excited about that taking place. So, you know, I can see a, a real resistance to that. And consequently, you know, we're going to be back to a situation where we're not going to have any certainty and probably not going to be harvesting very many trees. So, it doesn't place the, the county in any better position for receiving resources and, and of course, the. place the county in any better position for receiving resources. And of course, the job projection, you know, that's that's based on if the plan's implemented. I mean, you can start wiping jobs off there if the if the plans are not going to create near that number of jobs if they can't harvest.
You can also see the pilot projects of Johnson and Franklin, the resistance that that's met. Some of those in Roseburg were very young stands, very typical of what BLM is proposing to harvest here, yet they still met with rabid opposition. So and if you have to increase the acres, it's just that many more opportunities that you're going to face that conflict.
Back to the reserve, the large 1.4 or whatever, that large number that immediately went into the reserve. I noticed that there was about 650,000 acres that really wasn't impacted with the known critical owl habitat. What is it just age or is it riparian zones? What led them to throw in that large number that actually looks like it's not limited from from being sustainably?
There's two things going on there. Particularly when you look at critical habitat, the service used data that was available for the three-state area, not specific to the BLM. The BLM was actively asking the Fish and Wildlife Service to use specific BLM ONC information because it is higher quality. And they did not incorporate that in their critical habitat work. So they're using broader scale data in making their design. And now BLM comes in with the superior analysis and data and they draw a different conclusion of where is the best location to develop habitat in blocks the soonest. But you also have, there's many reasons to reserve under the BLM RMP. The purpose and need has multiple issues to reserve lands for. And it includes the riparian network, the administrative withdrawals, some recreation sites. So there's many things beyond owl issues that cause those reserves.
I see. And that gets back to one of the reasons why the ONC organization's concerned about the purpose and need because the purpose and need doesn't reflect the ONC Act.
Correct.
And we have appealed that and I think still waiting in response to have some sort of mediation with the BLM about that specific topic and haven't haven't received any any acknowledgement. So I don't know if that will get hammered out. Last question that I had really is, and I think it stems from the wildfires that we see today, two-part question. So does the plan acknowledge the expense to fight wildfires at any level?
I am not well versed on what they did on cost evaluation related to wildfire. But I mean, it's quite obvious that it's high. And it's quite obvious that it's when you if you don't have certainty on what you do post disturbance in your resource management plan, as you saw private industry versus the government, the government was still talking about it a year after the fire. Those things need to be quick to recover that material and recover the economic value. So I'm not well versed on what they did in cost analysis related to fire.
But if I did understand you rightly, you did mention that some of the management tools would would be used to reduce the effects of wildfire that are incorporated in the plan. Is that correct?
We think they could go further. Yes, uneven age management is effective, but it has a huge cost on the yield that comes off an acre of land. So you're you're placing an upfront decision. Okay, we'll be light on this to maintain fire resiliency. But you have you really tested if if you just had a theoretical thousand acres and you knew you had a fire problem, wouldn't you want to know, is it a third that's really severe? Is it half? Is it two thirds? So you could design appropriate action. And that's what we've seen the BLM has not done. They've not quantified and ranked the level of severity and designed a strategy that in due time would take care of that. Under BLM's current approach, it's 40 and 50 years before you would make a round of resiliency treatments. We think that's pretty long.
Thank you.
Johnson and Franklin even proposed they should be treating at least 20% of that landscape in a decade to respond to that.
So I have a couple of questions myself before we get to the second round. And I'm going to follow up on the fire because that was part of what the question I wanted to ask about a little bit. Does the plan at all address fire strategies as far as even just initial attack and how to deal with fire in general? Does it?
It's more at the policy level of applying uneven age management as the primary strategies. The tactical sort of things are not addressed in the resource management plans.
I kind of bring that up partly because this stovepipe that they've determined of 200 and some million in recreational value. Today, we are restricting a lot of our recreational use of our forest in Lane County. And not because necessarily Lane County doesn't have the ability, if all things being equal, to initiate initial attack and control fire with the current fire risk. It's because we've loaned all our resources to the fires south of us. And it's happened before. And it's that, you know, interaction between fire and harvest strategy that I don't think is taken into account and overestimates recreational value. You know, a year like this year or a year like 2013 with the Douglas and Big Wendy complex, which cost us $70 million to fight, which is, you know, exceeds some of the harvest values and some of those options, you know, it's just, you know, there has to be a balance there. And it seems like without addressing anything about, you know, firefighting strategy, the impacts of fire on recreational value. And we talked about one of your Lego blocks was riparian areas and possible riparian. Fire doesn't care about riparian setbacks.
Right.
It burns down to the water line, you know, basically. And you're left with no shade. You know, so that whole, you know, how we what is our strategy? And I actually compliment BLM and the private forest owners in the checkerboard, they have an initial attack strategy. I mean, they are very aggressive on initial attack. And usually, unless they get in really unusual conditions, they've been able to limit fires. I mean, our Yellow Point Fire happened on a red flag day and they were fortunate and able to limit that. And it happened at the worst possible time, 5:00 PM on a Friday, you know. And they did a great job of initial attack. Our Forest Service, on the other hand, though, seems to sit back and wait till it's complete conflagration and be able to declare that and then bring in crews from all over the country and spend the next 90 days fighting it till the rain starts. You know, so some discussion of firefighting strategy, I think, is should be part of a management plan. In addition to that, does it address at all post-fire salvage waivers or speeding up the process for salvage at all? Is this any of the strategies?
Not in the design of these alternatives. That is something that we will be asking for as they go into their proposed RMP.
Now, having toward the Yellow Point Fire, most of that happened on a private piece of property and a portions of it affected some BLM lands. The private property was already harvested this summer, completely. They were finished. The little pieces of the BLM that got burnt and were written and could have been harvested at the same time for salvage hadn't even been bid yet. And so they stood for a year and got and deteriorated in value. It's young timber, so it doesn't have a lot of value at harvest. It's far away. It's pretty far out from most of the mills. And the fact that a mill that's going to, you know, mill burnt timber has to shut down all their operations and only deal with burnt timber at the time. Meanwhile, this private company was dealing with acres and acres of burnt timber at the time and could have done the harvest, the salvage harvest at the same time, couldn't, you know, that would have been the best scenario is just make a deal with the private. And it just sits there. So now it's probably going to go no bid, sit there and be the initial, you know, point of where a fire is going to start. I mean, the likelihood of a reburn in an unsalvaged forest like that, I forget the statistics, but it's, you know, it seems, you know, and that's an area where, you know, on your maps, you were looking to try and develop large blocks of owl habitat in the coast range, pretty far out into the coast range there. You know, here we are, you know, by not dealing with some kind of way of having an accelerated post-fire harvest strategy that would, you know, limit the reignition of that forest, you're going to burn down that block of old growth later, you know, a couple summers later because you didn't deal with it in your plan. So there is a necessity, I think, for all these alternatives to deal with fire strategy and post-fire harvest. I think that's a glaring lack of part of these plans. And I know that actual firefighting is not necessarily a part of the management plan, but a discussion of strategy and post-fire should be in there because I think otherwise you're fooling yourself with any of these non-market valuations on recreation and carbon in particular. Because, you know, speaking of carbon release, I think some of our current fires are doing a really good job of that.
So I think you've just added a fifth bullet on recommendations for comments.
Yeah. The other thing I noticed in the non-market valuations was the value of county services, you know, in this, the revenue generation, the failure to address revenue in some ways. But if you talk to our travel agency, the people responsible for marketing travel in Lane County and travel Oregon, the biggest downfall to travel as far as national news went was the publication of the 911 tape from Josephine County. When that woman called asking for a sheriff to come because her boy or ex-boyfriend who had a court order against him was beating on her door trying to get in. And the recording of that tape where she couldn't send anybody because there was nobody to send caused people nationwide and worldwide to cancel reservations in Oregon. Where's the valuation of that impact? That intersection of the value of those county revenues and the services we provide to that recreational aspect. If you develop that stuff in the stovepipe, you're you're being completely unrealistic. How many people are going to recreate in a county in Oregon that has no patrol, almost no prosecution, very few jail cells, or a county like, you know, Curry that may be completely bankrupt? And we don't know what they're going to be because there's no bankruptcy laws in the state of Oregon to allow county to declare bankruptcy. If it was an irrigation district, they'd be allowed to declare bankruptcy, but not as a county. You know, what's the value of that? And I look at those, you know, that one graph you put up there that had the inflation adjusted average revenues of 100 and some million to the counties and where these plans put us in the long run. And of course, that they'll take five years if we're lucky to get up to the levels of revenue they're predicted. You know, I fear for Curry and Josephine County and where they'll be and what that's going to do to our travel industry and the stories coming out of those areas will do to our travel industry. And I think that the fact that we need to comment, they need to make those intersections in those stovepipes and county services need to be taken into account and evaluate the value of that. You know, and I kind of really appreciate you talking about stovepipes. Can you?
Let me just interject one other thought there. I think, you know, BLM has existing authorities under their current plans to do sustained yield management, to do regeneration harvest. And that paying attention to their current sale plans, because in the absence of secure rural schools, that will be the foundation for your payments. And so their actions taken today under their existing plans and existing NEPA, that can happen
They have stepped the political will to do it in an administration that backs them up on that. Not an administration that withdraws a plan that's been being developed for years and years, you know, one-sided decision. What, you know, after we make our comments, you know, suppose the board directs staff to make comments on it, after everybody's comments are in, what's the kind of next step? Is there a process where it gets to the governor for comment next in governor's offices?
So in the governor has the last point of review. That's when the final is issued. There's, I believe, the governor's office has 30 days. And it's a consistency review with state plans. The state will have keen interest in the fire issue because they provide fire protection services. I know that's a very key one for the state. If you have folks you know in the state legislature, that's a good one to talk with them about and have them raise that concern. So
I asked that question for Representative Lively in the audience.
So if the next step in this planning process, BLM, the comment period closes, they go through a classification of the comments to sort out the form letter ones from the substantive ones. They distribute that to their team to develop responses. They go through legal review. Whether they they release that synthesis of the comments before they issue a final RMP, you know, next spring or late winter is an unknown. We've, as a cooperating agency, we've asked for that to be shared within the cooperating environment earlier so we can see where is BLM, what did they take from the public? These are placing high verbal weight on, oh, we need to hear from the public before we make the next move. But it's also in the administration, this, the amount of time in this process that the state director spends with the planning staff in Washington DC is remarkable. The decision does not lie here.
Thank you. Other questions?
Commissioner Thorndyke. Thank you very much. I ask a first round of questions mostly about the impact of the various alternatives on the on the northern spotted owl population. Just wanted to be clear, do all, I said this, but I just want to be clear about it, that the continuing decline in the overall northern spotted owl population would would not be affected by any of the alternatives, including the no action alternative?
Time is the biggest thing that's going to turn around an owl response. It's going to take time to develop a network of older forest blocks, to advance the amount of older forests that is of high importance for their survival. Time is the only thing they can take. That these are predictions.
But if one of these options is alternatives is implemented, especially the preferred alternative, if these are implemented, even if the preferred alternative is implemented or the no action alternative is implemented, there's still going to be a decline in the northern spotted owl population.
The service identifies even under a no harvest scenario or the BLM identifies even under a no harvest scenario, in the coast range, it's better than 50% odds, the spotted owl will not survive in the coast range.
Okay. All right. And with regard to another aspect of the ONC Act that's often not talked about, there's a tremendous emphasis on timber production. But the ONC Act also envisions that there'll be continuation of the rivers and stream flow. And I'm wondering how much, particularly given the fact that we've had these intense drought years and maybe even depending on your point of view on the overall climate change, we may have a substantial change in climate and particularly a drying of the climate in the temperate rainforests of the Pacific Northwest. What does this EIS say in any of these alternatives? What does it say about the maintenance of the stream flows that are that are part of the ONC lands? Is are any of these, do they document, well, there'll be more stream flow, there'll be less stream flow, there'll be a lot more, there'll be a lot less? What is the actual or is there any attention to that component of the ONC Act?
There is quite a bit of emphasis on this. All of the strategies for riparian management I would classify are in the very strong. They, from the 2008, were 20 some alternative riparian strategies were considered. And they picked four. riparian strategies were considered, and they picked four very, very strong strategies. And the main criteria they're using is maintenance of temperature, maintenance of shade, and control of sedimentation. And all of these strategies rank very, very high in comparison to, if state forest practices retains about 5% of the forest of an area around riparian, these are in excess of 20 and 30% of the area around riparian. These are very strong for fish, water, temperature, sedimentation. It's the same thing with the owl strategies. They pick strategies from earlier work that were very, very strong. What they didn't get at is, could you, could you do, still get these good outcomes with higher sustained yield timber production? That's what they have not tested.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. We're already 45 minutes past the termination of this item, and the discussion just seems to be going on and on into areas that we really weren't here to hear presentations on.
Understood. I think we need to probably get this wrapped up soon, too, because we have staff waiting for the executive session. I don't mean to cut off Mr. Cadwell, but I do think we need to talk about, maybe change the discussion into, you know, question and answer so much as to whether we're not gonna ask staff to come back to us with a set of comments and provide some direction in that regard. Commissioner Stewart.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring back at our next meeting, which I believe is two weeks from now, a draft, draft comments that we could review and potentially approve for sending. It would also give us one additional week. We could have an additional meeting following that. That would still meet the August 21st timeline, so I would move that we direct staff to formulate comments based on our presentation and the comments that each of us made.
Let me just double check. Are we down next week?
Yes.
So the next meeting's the 18th, which only leaves us four days. We don't have another meeting between, so our next meeting will be when we'd have to make a decision on comments. So I would expect a pretty robust discussion then, and maybe have to do a little wordsmithing. So.
I will second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded, direct staff to prepare draft comments on the BLM draft resource management plan, or resource management plan draft EIS, I should say. Any discussion of motion? Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. Well, in the, the draft comments I'm looking at, I would certainly say that the issues that I brought up today would be of paramount interest to me. The first being that, that the existing recovery plan for the northern spotted owl shows a decline in the overall numbers, and I'd like to see our comments reflect how this plan, this proposed BLM EIS, how this plan is going to further the recovery, and if it isn't, why it isn't, and to point out the parent conflict with one federal agency saying over here, oh, there's this, there's this, you know, threatened species that's in decline. We thought it was in a decline as much as 0.4%, but now we think it's, you know, 2.9% per year, and so in 20 years, it's gonna be gone unless we do something. And this EIS, that this other federal agency over here is producing, is saying that of all alternatives, oh, by the way, all of them do just the opposite. They force the number of northern spotted owls downward rather than recovery, which is what the other federal agency wants done. To me, we, as the Board of Commissioners, can't be part of the federal government's, you know, difficulty in following two separate laws that appear to be in conflict, and we can't be saying, oh, do something that maybe the timber industry wants done, cut a few more trees, but meanwhile, all that's gonna do is produce a piece of paper saying, do that, and then there's gonna be another piece of paper, probably from the administration or from a federal court, saying, you can't do that because it conflicts with this other thing over here. So all we've done is, as Commissioner Light can point it out, we've just financed the paper industry. We have not really changed the outcome of the management of the forests for the better. My second area of interest would be the water area, and in particular, highlighting any good news that could be in this plan that I'm hearing today here, but I'd like to have more information on that, and particularly the effect of climate change on water production on these lands, the effect of the plan proposals, the alternatives on water production, because a lot of our aquatic species, not to mention domestic drinking water and agriculture, are dependent upon these flows, and if the management changes that for the worse, we need to be saying, we don't like that. We want to maintain an essential element of the ONC Act that has often been forgotten, and that is water production and water and the importance of water. Thank you.
So I'll just add real quick that, in order, if there is gonna be discussion in our comments of spotted owl, that we ask that the impact of the barred owl be removed in comparing the alternatives as to how they affect the spotted owl population, because I think one of the reasons why all the alternatives show a decline is it did not remove the barred owl's impact, that the actual impact of each management plan, because it is ultimately gonna have higher habitat created long-term, is negligible between the plans on the impact of the population of spotted owl. The real impact on the spotted owl right now is the invasive barred owl. And if we're gonna make a comment relative to spotted owl populations, we should ask them to, in their modeling, remove the barred owl impact when they're comparing which plan does a better job of spotted owl preservation. Mr. Cabral.
So for Commissioner Sorensen's issues, I would recommend your staff, and this is a fairly quick read, the spotted owl needs of the spotted owl sections are pretty short, and they're to the point. They pose a question, does it do this? Answer is, same thing with water and same thing with critical habitat. So you have BLM biologists that worked in concert with the regulatory agencies in this work, and they've reached their conclusions based on a very high level of data, very specific to the BLM in drawing their conclusions. So it's a, it's a quick read for your staff to address Commissioner Sorensen's issues.
Any further comments to the motion or deliberations? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. And I appreciate getting the expert analysis.
We, I leave that presentation, and the side-by-side is in the CD and FEC.
Excellent. So moving on, I will ask for a review of assignments, and obviously, we just created one with that motion. Other assignments? The.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped something. I see you raising your hand because I'm jumping ahead. We should get the agenda team request first and work session request, so.
I'll hold that.
Commissioner Sorensen. I thought we were going to cover that, so I appreciate that. We talked today about the idea of putting on the future agenda, maybe the topic of smoking in Land County parks. I would endorse that idea. We talked about extending the existing ordinance, dealing with.
We got three head nods on that.
Yeah, yeah. So it seems to me that those are a couple that have been, that people were interested in.
I'll just ask real quick, do we have three head nods for having a future agenda item on smoking in parks? I support that.
May I ask you to get a clarification, Mr. Chair? If you would, so we talked about that we are gonna, we are planning to have a work session on the Community Health Improvement Plan, at which we would, we'd like to talk about tobacco-free campuses. And to us, that means parks, facilities, any county-owned property. So my question is, is that sufficient, or would you like to have an item that specifically talks just about smoke-free parks and separate from the chip? So is it okay if we bring that forward and have that conversation as part of the chip? And it's a broader conversation about smoke-free campuses, and the board can direct us on what you're doing, don't want to do, or do you want an individual one about parks?
I'm, I'm fine with doing it as part of the chip, but I will ask Commissioner Sorensen, who brought this up, does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Any other agenda team requests? So I have one item I'd like to bring up. You know, we did Mr. Mokraheisky's review, but we need to make an amendment to his contract, because his contract does not necessarily deal with performance-based adjustments and how we deal with performance evaluations very strongly. And what I'd like to propose is a subcommittee of the board to work with Mr. Mokraheisky and our HR staff to develop an amendment to his contract to come back to the full board in an open meeting to be discussed and voted on. It's something fairly similar to a process that I was part of as a board member at LCC, where the board chair and vice chair, she had a president's building, had a three-year rolling contract, and at the end of every year, the board chair and vice chair would negotiate an adjustment to, and a one-year extension of that three-year contract, and come back to the full board for a vote on that. What it will prevent, I think, in doing it this way is, one, it's the board working on the contract, not Mr. Mokraheisky putting his HR staff in a position that a former administrator did with the HR director, preparing a draft change to a contract where it looked like there's undue influence. I think it's a better process for us to be the ones working directly with the administrator on a proposed change, and then coming back to the board with that change to be voted on publicly. It's more transparent, and it removes conflict of interest for the HR staff. I mean, we still may use HR and legal counsel to help us with language and suggestions and comparables and whatever else we need, but it'll be board members requesting that information, not the administrator. So is there support for having myself and the vice chair be that subcommittee and start that process? Seeing thumbs up from, from two there. Do I have a third? I sent for that.
Sure.
So I think that looks like we'll move forward with that process, and I think that will deal with the issue we have right now, kind of a contract that didn't quite anticipate some of these changes, and we can move forward with that. And I'm sure we'll be coming back to the board either in exec session or in full session to talk about that in, over the next, next couple weeks, or months. We'll see how quickly we can get this done. But thank you. I appreciate that, that now we can do review of assignments.
Okay. So I have a couple here. First, we'll be back on August 25th for the fourth reading on the tobacco ordinance. The last item to bring forward draft comments on the BLM draft EIS, that we'll bring forward on August 18th. And I did chat with Mr. Kyler, and he indicated that he believes he captured everything that the board directed, and we can incorporate that in there for your discussion on the 18th. The request from Commissioner Sorensen, and I saw head nods for, was the discussion that we'll bring forward as part of the chip work session, and I need to verify when we're planning on doing that. I'm not sure if it's late August or early September, but we'll have a work session on the chip and a specific item to talk about smoke-free campuses generally, and seek direction from the board on what you would like to do there. And then finally, direction for the chair and vice chair to work on an amendment for the county administrators' contract.
Any assignments missed there? Is there any other business? So if not, then the board is going to meet an executive session, and although we'll reserve the right to come back in a public session, I don't see a need, so we'll probably adjourn from there. And I want to note for the public that we have been ordered by court order to meet as the entire board in, at the federal courthouse tomorrow, and we have a regular board meeting scheduled at the termination of that court-ordered meeting to take care of any business that comes from that meeting in public session in accordance with state public meeting law. So at this time, the Board of County Commissioners will meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 1926602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in the executive session, and we do reserve the right to come back in a public session, but I don't see that need at this time, so we will now recess and move up to the Board of Commissioners conference.
I have personal business to take before 1:00, so I'm gonna go do that.
We'll see you shortly.